All right, so welcome everyone to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of August 25th, 2022. As Peter has stated, the meeting is being recorded and obviously, obviously being held online as per certain provisions of the open meeting law related to COVID. So on our agenda tonight, we do have four public hearings. There was an updated agenda earlier in the week. So I'm just going to go through the order of those public hearings so that everyone in the audience knows. The first one we will do is 225 Pond Street, that is the McDonald's building. Next is 311 Pleasant Street, those are the solar panels at the VFW. Then 300 Elliott Street, oh, sorry, well, 300 Elliott Street, which will be continued, we'll get to that later. 399 Union Street, which is a proposed Starbucks restaurant, and finally to 10 to 60 Main Street in downtown. So, so to begin the meeting though, and I apologize to the planning board if they didn't get the revised, revised agenda, I don't, did that go out, Peter?
Yes.
I haven't caught all the emails maybe this week as I was traveling. But the only differences were the order of the public hearings and that we added number two on the, on the agenda, which I think will be a regular thing, and that is a report from the clerk. So I will turn it over to Kate Jurzick, who is the planning board clerk.
Thank you. So on behalf of the board, I just want to report, we started responses or collecting responses from the clerk in mid-July, so from mid-July to mid-August, specifically to 8/22, we received through the Ashland that planning, which goes to the planning department and the planning board, 18 correspondence. Actually, more than that, but 18 or in some six of those had multiples, I counted them. The clerk has been tasked with responding to sort of a general email. And I responded to, on behalf of the board, to seven of those. And I wanted to just report that specifically, we've been thanked as a board by many of those when I send the response. And a specific I'd like to read, thank you for letting me know you received my letter. Also, please thank everyone for all you do. After watching a few meetings, I realized it can be pretty cool.
Great. Anything else, Kate?
I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. We're intending just to keep this as a regular agenda item so that we can make sure the residents know and understand that their emails are are being received and passed on to the, not only to the board, but the appropriate person that can answer more specific questions as well. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the 225 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. Peter, can you just give a brief update of where we are on the project?
Sure. So 220, excuse me, can everyone hear me? Okay, so 225 Pond Street, which is known as McDonald's. I was last, we reopen, we're reopening the hearing. And from the last planning board meeting, there was
It's really quiet, Peter.
Oh, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm back after two years, I think I need a new pair of headphones. And so with that, so excuse me, so 225 Pond Street, also known as McDonald's, is back in front of us here tonight. And from the last meeting, I did reach out to Mass DOT as asked by the planning board members and communicate with them concerning the ingress and egress of the site to and from Pond Street. And so that is still awaiting Mass DOT, however, I did send that off last week. However, tonight, in talking with the chairman and also talking, I mean, chair, the chair, Tricia, and also talking with the applicant from Bowler, referred tonight by Eric DeBrul, is that the next step for this application is to go to design review for review because, number one, it is a triggered site plan review from the planning board. And number two, it's along Pond Street. And so those are two elements that this project does click off on. And so therefore, we do need to make some suggestions and comments before we send this off to design review. Design review will be reviewing this project next Thursday. And then hopefully, this project can come back to us on September 8th for for review, for a continued review. So with that, Trish or in or I'll hand it off to the applicant. I don't know if there's any changes to the existing site plan from the last meeting. However, I think that it's appropriate for the planning board to make any comments regarding the site plan and any elements of the site plan that we will be looking for the design review committee to take a look at.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's where we are at this time. You, you had mentioned, right, that the, that the, the site plan had been, is now approved by CONCOM and has approved, been approved by the ZBA, so it's
Yes, at this current time, the double drive-through has been approved in the site plan has been approved by the, excuse me, the double drive-through has been approved by the zoning board of appeals. And the conservation has approved the site and also the stormwater permit for this application.
So then it's in, fully in the hands of the planning board.
Correct.
As Peter says, it does need to go to the design review committee. And so maybe we can just bring up the site plan briefly. And what I'm looking for from the board is a bullet list of items that we would, that we would like, obviously, this is a very different type of projects than than the other things we have sent to design commute, design review committee recently, but we should look at the site plan and see if we have some, some items that we would like the designer review committee to focus in on. Can we bring up just the, the site plan?
Yeah, Eric, please, no, I need your co-host. See if everybody can see that.
Yes. All right. I'm just looking for a design review committee, things that, or sorry, from the planning board, bullet list of things we would like the designer review to committee to, to look at. I'm looking for these to, obviously, this, like I said, this is a different scope of work than what we typically deal with. So I would expect the, the bullet list that we're giving them, obviously, to correspond to the scope of work that is being proposed.
I have a comment on the signage.
Okay.
That I believe there's some signage right now as you exit that looks like it blocks the stop sign. So that may be cleared up with coordination with Mass DOT, but I think that should be looked at.
Okay, signage. Anna, were you jumping in?
I think that was, that was the point I was going to raise, just, I would like design review to comment on, you know, size and visibility of the signage. Whether there's something unique that we may want to do as far as lighting in the area to ensure safety or visibility, if you will. And that, that was it. So I guess to augment Kate's comment a little bit.
Okay. Deepa, Marcelo, Kevin, anything you want to?
I, I would only add to, to that, Tricia, that just the, the two things that I'm always concerned about any project, which is, which is, you know, impact on the, on the public realm and impact on the neighbors. So I think on, on the public, this is very little change in terms of how the site operates. So I think what Anna and Kate had said, it's makes sense in terms of the new signage. But since, you know, inasmuch as the, the new signage on the drive-through is, is, has, it emits light, I, I think a careful review to make sure that, that the, 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 the green fence or green wall that, that stops the light from reaching the neighbor. I'll make sure that, that, that is appropriate. And, and I think those would be my two concerns.
Okay. Deepa?
I think Anna and Marcelo covered it all. Didn't have any additional ones. Thank you.
Okay. And Kevin, anything you want to jump in on or?
I was just going to say the plantings to the, the screening trees there, I know they're good at that stuff. And then maybe if they want to take just a closer look at the trash structure, I think that's new and added, and we didn't really look at the details of that.
And, and am I right that there's also a new garbage enclosure?
Right, yeah.
Is that right?
I think that's what Kevin is referring to, Tricia.
Okay, I thought he, I thought he meant the side fencing. Okay.
But I also add something, I don't recall if we discussed this, but in light of the location on 126 and kind of the future of 126 and the focus on pedestrian traffic and bike pass and all that. Can someone remind me, or do we have some, some bike, you know, bicycle placement, if you will, on this site? And is that something we would want design review to think about?
Question for the applicant, I guess, is there a bike parking, bike blocking area?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any existing bike racks on the site.
Is that something that the applicant would be open to considering since 126 is going to become, the vision, if you will, is it's very going to, it's going to be more pedestrian and bike friendly? Is that something that the applicant would consider? And if so, can we get some ideas of where? And maybe consider if we want design review to think about placement or the design elements?
I, I think we can just put that on the design, on, on the list. And that can be covered by design review committee that can, they can have that discussion.
Is the applicant open to that, just to kind of make sure we're?
Yeah, absolutely. We've been through a lot. So I don't think a bike rack will, will slow, slow McDonald's down. Definitely commit to that.
All right. So then the, the list I have, and Peter, I can review this with you if you don't, didn't catch it. I have signage, lighting, vegetation, the fencing, vegetation throughout, the fencing along the property line, the garbage enclosure and a possible bike rack. That would be the, the list to pass on?
Look, I have that.
I, I wouldn't mind hearing some ideas that might, might make this a more efficient space. You know, I'm thinking about net zero and sustainability. But I think that's more for the planning board to, to come back to as we discuss things next time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they can look at those things as appropriate to the current scope of the project, which is kind of the
That's fine. Yeah, we could throw that in there.
Yeah. So, so with that checklist, if the applicant is okay, we will send this design review committee and we will continue this until when, Peter?
I would ask for September 8th, please.
September 8th?
Erica, is that okay? Does that work for Bowler and McDonald's?
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly, we were just a little caught off guard. We thought we were coming back to this being, you know, kind of going back to talking about redesigns and going to design committee. So certainly on the 8th, hopefully, we can get through the first and make any revisions and hopefully be in a good spot on the 8th. Certainly, if somebody that has thoughts on where a bike rack wants to go, just, I'd love not to get continued again on the 8th. It's just getting really difficult for McDonald's to be in a position to go to construction this year. Really, you know, probably that meeting on the 8th would be the last chance to be able to, to get to construction this year before paving plants closed down in November. But so I just just wanted to put that out there.
Seems that we should be able to make that schedule, I think, design review.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's a reasonable request, Tricia.
Yeah, I, I do too. It, it, these were things that we, we had thought we were, would have resolved. But it does need to just go through design review. So and it, it's a, it's, you know, it's a small scale project, so I, I don't think it's one that should require multiple meetings. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eric. And I know I, I had a conversation with Dan this week, so. I want to thank you and obviously thank you, Bowler, for, for working with everybody.
Absolutely. No, we appreciate everybody's help, for sure.
All right. So I will make a motion that the 225 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review will be continued until Thursday, September 8th. Is there a second?
A second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Aye, aye, aye.
Anna Testmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzick, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that will be continued until September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great night, everybody.
All right, the next item on our agenda is 311 Pleasant Street Special Permit. This is the VFW building and the solar plant panels, which we have to wrap up a little bit. And Peter, can you kind of explain where we are and what we need to do?
Yeah, so good evening, everybody. So tonight, I think everyone knows, or the planning board knows that this pro, project back in the spring was, the special permit was denied by the planning board. And then the planning board, the decision was appealed by the applicant. The applicant tonight, there are representation from the app.
Sorry, Peter, you really need to get the mic up there.
I'm sorry. The applicant tonight is represented by Valerie Moore. The planning board did have discussions and through an executive session, we did sign a settlement agreement and that was dated July 14th, 2022. With that settlement agreement and the filing with the court, this judgment and the original application's decision was therefore remanded back to the planning board. So tonight, as part of this process, is we are opening a new public meeting or a public hearing, remanding to, to deal with the remand of the 311 Pleasant Street. So we do have Mike Keneffek from counts from our, our, our town council's office here on the call to help us through. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the next step for me would be to read the public hearing notice into the record. And then we can reopen the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this, this is essentially the, the final step. As you know, there was a, a decision issued by the planning board on the special permit. There was an appeal before the land court. After that, there was some negotiation between council. And I believe about six weeks ago, it was before you, through an executive session, that kind of set off a settlement process. We returned to the land court, we requested a remand. And there was an order of remand issued by the court, also a settlement agreement. And this is kind of like the, pretty much the final step of, of the process. So one of the requirements is that we would have to go into, take a formal vote tonight.
Okay. So Tricia, with that said, excuse me, I am going to read the public hearing into the record. So the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 25th, 2022, at 7:15 PM by a Zoom conference call to hear the petition on remand as ordered by the court on July 19th, 2022 of Next Grid PO Box 7775, number 3069, San Francisco, California. Area code, excuse me, zip code 494120, requesting a special permit, site plan review and design review per chapter 40A, section 6 of the Massachusetts Zoning Act in chapter 282, 8.1 flood zone, flood overlay district, comma, section 9.3 special permit, comma, 9.6 design review and 9.4 site plan review of the Ashland bylaws. The application is proposing modifications to the approved special permit dated May 6, 2022 and site plan review dated May 6, 2022 for the development of solar canopy structures within the parking area as an accessory structure. All works shall be within the limits of the existing parking lot and there shall be no proposed changes to the existing building. The property in question is located at 311 Pleasant Street. Accessory map 13 lot 052 and within the, excuse me, and within the residential B zoning district. The property is owned by the Ashland Memorial Associates, co-care of Richard H. Smith, president. 311 Pleasant Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and appear at time, excuse me, and or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at appointment at town hall during normal business hours or on the town of Ashland's website. Care of the planning board current projects. For more information, please contact Peter Matzek, myself, town planner. And then it lists my phone number and then my email. So with that, the public hearing is now back open.
All right. So at this time, Peter, if it's appropriate, we should just go through the, the basics, the, that's, I'd like to bring up the plans the planning board just remembers, which plan it is that is being, that we're looking at this case, which would be the last plan, I believe that's dated March 9th. And if you could just show, I think you've been working on the proposed changes to the decision that you were going to go through, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll give you a minute to, to get those up.
I just got to grab one or two things. Maybe everyone can see my screen. So this is the, and this is the site plan dated March 9th, 2022. This was the last plan seen by the planning board. I'm going to zoom in to the area here. This last change moved the solar panels, so they were a minimum 50 feet away from the side property lines for a setback purposes. Vegetation was implemented here in the rear. There are three red maples and six Leyland cypress. Coming up here, looking at the property. Please note that these, the two solar panels are parallel to each other. They were previous, there were previous renderings where there was additional solar panels that came this way along the edge of the pavement in the rear. I believe on the westerly side of the street, the westerly property line, there are there are nine Leyland cypress, which we planted, that will be a minimum of six feet tall at implementation. And then here on the eastern property line, there are a number, well, there are 15 six feet tall Leyland cypress. Please note, there'll be, I believe, a utility connection here. And also right here, which is going to be the connection point to the overhead wires. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on the site plan?
So in talking about, when we talk about the, the vegetation to be maintained, that would, that will be all of the vegetation, is that right?
Yes, that's one of the conditions, if you've seen the proposed decision. But one of the agreements that we had as part of the settlement was that they would, you know, keep after and kind of guarantee that the vegetation would establish in, you know, for the next five years.
Are there any other questions on the plan? Otherwise, Peter, if you want to bring in the conditions, we can go through any changes you noted.
So this is the site plan approval. I'm going to share this first, excuse me. Can everyone see the screen?
Peter, just, is this the
Yes.
version, the version that I said with the editorial page?
Yeah, I did. So just please note, I wrote, I started drafting a decision today. I did send it over to Mike to take a look at it for, for proof. And he has provided the changes. And so therefore, this decision was obviously developed using, was obviously developed. But I can say that these dates typically do not change at all. Elements that were pretty much changed within the findings I have highlighted. So I'm going to keep on going down. I didn't want to read verbatim the findings, but I did, some of these elements, I did change. I did have to change as I drafted this decision. So I can, I can go through this one by one. But number A, there was no changes. B, obviously changed. And and we can all review this right now.
I think we can just ask questions if we have any. Everyone ready to scroll forward?
Peter, the C one, it's probably just a typo, unique. The second line, there will be no impact to unique natural or historic features.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
If everyone's good, I'm going to keep on scrolling forward. With no comments, I'm going to continue on.
I'm sorry, could you, could you pause on that one?
Yep.
Okay. And note that I do, I do see the hand raised. And as soon as we go through this, I will open this up for brief public comments. So, so just hold on a minute.
This is the special project condition, and this comes from the settlement agreement. Mike, is this, did this sound okay to you?
Yeah, we, we took a look at it and actually, Next Grid's council as well. You know, this, this was kind of the biggest part of the settlement was the, was the vegetation.
So does the maple trees and evergreens, is that, does that include all of the veg, all of the vegetation that is planted for the project?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
This is just bleeding hairs, Michael, but if you can confirm, so they, they are to replace any, any planting that fails to take on the first five years. So that's a one, is a one-time replacement? Or is another five years after that planting gets replaced?
It would just be for, for the five years. And Peter would, I guess, would keep a, keep an eye on everything. We figured, you know, five years, I think would, would at that point, you know, some things die the first year. But within five years, we believe that all of vegetation will be established and thriving at that point.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Okay, continue.
Continue on. These is get into the site procedures where these are your, are standard, uh, below plate conditions. There's been no changes to these. And then there's obviously the decision. And then this is just left open as the vote of the planning board. And that's just the signature page.
Can you go, can you go back up to the first, the first part you highlighted there? Okay. Yeah.
The next piece up?
I, I'm just confused because it seems like in this, like we is mentioning Leyland cypress trees. And in the, in the text below, it says maple and evergreen. So should that, should that last text just include, you know, all, all trees planted as part of the project? It seems strange that was calling out specific ones. You know, do you know what I'm saying?
Yes. Yeah, so you mean paragraph one of the conditions?
I, I think that's what it was, where it was calling out maple and evergreen, but it didn't call out Leyland cypress. You know, so maybe it's just a general note that, that all the trees planted as part of the project are, are part of that five-year watch, I guess.
Yeah, we, we could probably do a bit more general in, in the first paragraph there, Peter, just saying the, the vegetation shown on the plans.
Right, right. So I think that's, I think that's down further though, Peter. It's like, it's okay here. It's, it's at that kind of general note later on where we talk about the five years. It's in that paragraph there. So provided during the initial hearing, uh.
Show me to put them.
It's it's that part, including the plantings of maple trees, but maybe it's including all planting shown on the drawing. Or something like that. Yep, and then put, and then put all in front of um instead of the including all plantings. Right there, yeah.
Got it.
There. Um. If the planning board has comments on that, um, that's fine if it sounds good to them, great. Um, any other, but any other comments from the planning board? Okay, um. While. Maybe we give this just a last thought, I will, because this is a new public hearing, I will open it up to public comment. Um, these are, should be brief, you know, at this point, um, I won't keep a specific time, but we need the comments to be very specific. So, um, Peter, can you?
Uh, sure. So, uh, to open up the public comment, uh, Roberta Solman, uh, your hand is raised first. Please unmute yourself and introduce your uh introduce yourself by name and address.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Oops, okay. Okay, hi, Roberta Solman, twenty-eight Woodridge Lane in Ashland. Um, I have three comments. Um, one, wherever the Riverwalk is referred to in the document, Riverwalk is one word, not two. So just um, it's just a minor edit with that. Um, the other two comments I had were early on in the document in one of the yellow areas. Um, Peter, I'm not, I think it was the first or second one, if you could maybe go back up to that. Um, okay, whoop. Um. Yeah, u- under B, it says the planning board finds a proposal, the canopies will be screened appropriately, which will minimize any obstruction of the existing view from the Riverwalk. Um, that's got it backwards. We are trying to obstruct the view. If you're on the Riverwalk, we.
Roberta, your, your, your comments are in and out for me. I don't know if other people are hearing it that way.
Anyone else having problem?
Does anyone else have any problem hearing Roberta?
No.
No, okay. Maybe it's me.
Um, so any. The way that's worded, it's the flip side of what we were actually requesting. We want it to, the people walking along the Riverwalk, we want them to not be able to see the VFW and the solar panels. We want it to be screened and obstructed. And this says, which will minimize any obstruction of the existing view from the Sudbury River. We want people to be able to walk along the Riverwalk and see the Sudbury River and all the natural stuff, but we. Want screening so that they don't see solar panels and the VFW. That was the whole sort of focus of um our comments and the documents that we submitted um and pictures we submitted for the previous hearings. Um, and the other comment is that.
Cute, hold, can you hold just right there? So, is that, that would be, that would be basically um, that would minimize.
Which will, which will.
Which would minimize the view of the solar panels from the Sudbury River. That would be appropriate change.
Or, um, yes, or we'll screen the Riverwalk and the Sudbury River. Um.
But that's, but that's already said at the beginning of the paragraph, I believe, what Tricia said would kind of completed.
But it's not, this yellow text, if that's new text, it is not what we, is not saying it there. What it's, what it's saying there is that it'll minimize any obstruction of the existing view from the Sudbury River.
But before that, it says the solar canopy is will be screened appropriately. With the red maple trees and six Leland cypress.
Then, then you don't need minimize any obstruction, right?
We, I guess we could just delete the last few words of the sentence.
Yeah, just delete it up to property.
Probably be clearer with that, with that deleted. The final issue I I question I had and thing I wanted to bring up is, and this was, was a document that I had also submitted previously for the other hearings that we had. Um, Leland cypress trees are really problematic. They have uh major problems with pests. Um, particularly made worse by droughts. They have cancer diseases. They are often planted in places that are inappropriate. They're crowded together, which leads to poor air circulation, um, increasing disease and shading out of the lower branches. So. In the interest of not wanting anybody to have to bother coming back to replant in five years. Maybe it would be better to look at other kinds of screening or some kind of mixed screening. Uh, but certainly maple deciduous trees that are gonna lose their leaves aren't gonna provide any screening. Um, you know, in the fall and the winter. Evergreens might be better, but some kind of mix and maybe not Leland cypress. So, um, and that's not a new comment. We had mentioned that before, but because this is a new hearing, I just wanted to make sure to say it again.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kathy, do you want, Kath, we can, um, Peter, do you wanna um? Go to next, maybe Kathy Rooney can weigh in on that.
Sure, so Kathy Rooney, next up.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Clear.
Right. Uh, so I'm gonna echo the comment about the Leland cypress, because it's not a native plant. I'm wondering why you're not using native juniper trees. And as Sturman just pointed out, the red maples are deciduous, so they're only gonna screen until the leaves drop and come back in, so for like almost six months of the year. Those canopies will be visible. Uh, and then I'm wondering, I I'm just curious about this five-year maintenance thing, because. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna urge that the applicant think about a mixed evergreen hedge over there. Um, because.
Oh, over where?
For any of the screening they're doing, because if you use one type of plant and some invasive bug comes along, or. We have some of these crazy winters where we have three seventy-degree days in January. All the evergreens break dormancy, and they have enormous problems after that for the next year. At least, they're very subject to disease, drought, stress. Um, you name it, whatever comes along, it might be, you know, if they're in a weakened condition, they will fall victim to it. So we need to. Be a little smarter about this and start and stop planting monoculture plantings and put plant mixed native plantings and hope that they manage. With the stress of, you know, what we're living through right now. So. So let's say they, all these trees, whatever gets planted, plant, gets gets planted in five years later, or let's say six years later, this. It's a problem.
So Kathy, I understand your point. I understand your point. We need to know how to correct it.
How to correct.
Uh, how to correct this text right now.
You, you need to put it in as a mixed evergreen plantings. Take out three red maple trees and Leland cypress, and all the screening plants need to be mixed evergreen.
Kathy, I I I understand the concept, but I I I personally don't think removing the maples is necessarily a good idea. I think um, these kind of pieces are like twenty-five feet tall. I think we need even, even if they're deciduous, at least for part of the year, having some higher planting would be appropriate. I think having both. In my opinion, it's, it's a good idea, whatever the species might be.
Well, red maples, if they were planted closer to the water, might actually, conservation agent might allow you to do it, because they're native and they, they're called swamp maple. That's their nickname, but the problem with the, with the deciduous trees is that for six months of the year. Those solar canopies are invisible from that area. So you could plant white pine, they're really tall. Junipers get fairly tall. Um, and the idea is.
But uh, but uh, that, that, that's fine. I'm I'm just saying that if you just plant some hedges and some um evergreens, they're never gonna get to thirty feet tall. So you're gonna have.
Sure they are. They'll get to the same height. If you plant the right types of plants, they'll absolutely get to thirty feet tall.
Okay, we want to have, um, we want to have the right tree mix here, probably not the perfect tree mix, but a good tree mix. So again, can you propose, Kathy, a simple replacement for the six lit Leland cypress? Um. Well, I think we can leave in place some of the trees, though not ideal, um, in, in some respects.
I did, I just, I I would like to jump in here.
Please.
We really shouldn't revisit this issue. Um, I think as I explained before, the special permit criteria that you're, you're issuing this uh. Under, it's just for the floodplain, and I think you had already made a a decision that there's no impact from the floodplain. Perhaps in the future, we can talk to the uh, to the um, VFW or to Next Grid. Um. About different trees, but. W- we can't, we can't go back to to this screening issue. Uh, we're so far down the road. Um, we really need to make a decision based on the vegetation that was already in the plans. And that, um. We've already reached this point, um, kind of assuming would be planted there.
Well, understood. Um, so Peter, where can we go from here?
At this point, uh, thank you, and and Mike, if you can confirm, I think it makes sense to move forward with the vote on this application. Um. And then in the meantime, you know, like, I'm I'm happy to reach out uh after the decision has been made to Next Grid uh and maybe uh see if we can come to a consensus that. Uh, different indoor alternative trees uh can be planted besides the legal and Cypress. Um, however, that may, it needs to be done after um, after, after the approval.
Because the, the point is that they, that the actual, the, the. As the purview of the planning board only has to do with issues within the, but it only has to do. With the um potential um problems of putting a solar canopy in the floodplain. The purview of the planning board actually does not have anything to do with the view, correct me if I'm wrong, anything to do with the view from the Riverwalk. That these issues are really, in in a, in effect, not really under discussion. Is that your point, Mr. Kenefik?
Yes, um. Perhaps, perhaps after tonight, um, Peter can talk to somebody and and say, listen. You know, the Next Grid, uh, these trees might do better here, which might be easier, but. Uh, we really can't go back and start talking about the vegetation again tonight and and kind of reinventing the wheel, because I know it was discussed at length. Uh, prior to the lawsuit, so I I think we just need to focus on. Um. The agreement that we've reached at this point.
Okay, we have one more public comment. I I don't know if Kathy's hand is raised a second time. I'll allow, I'll allow those two public comments and and um, and I think that will be all we will take tonight.
So.
Can I? I think it's Joe, I think Joel Arbaitman was had his hand up.
Uh, Joel Arbaitman, uh, Joel, do you wanna uh unmute yourself and?
Yeah, and I'll see if I, I'll see if I can get my video on here. Uh, I just had one very quick comment. I wasn't planning to comment on this uh hearing at all, but I, I guess it's sort of a question. I I understand the uh. Uh, issue uh includes some discussion or some policy setting. By the findings of the planning board regarding the maintenance requirements. And if uh it is not possible, based on council's guidance, to revisit the types of plantings, perhaps. Uh, given the recognition that these plantings may uh not survive well due to the, you know, that it's mono plantings, you know, it's all, it's all the same greenery. Uh, perhaps some added strength to the maintenance requirements could be included in the planning board's findings. Uh, given the very likely possibility that plants may in five years or sooner. Uh, not be doing the job they were intended to be doing. So I just wanted to ask about what, where where the planning board goes with this maintenance issue and what are the possibilities?
Understood, thank you. Kathy, one final comment?
Well, I'm I'm disappointed about the, about the Leland Cypress being in this, because they're not native and. Um, so my other comment, which is gonna go along with. What I said earlier, I'm gonna echo what Mr. Braveman just said, and then how do these plants get maintained? When we're having water ban, like, how how does that work exactly, or do we need to go back to town meeting? Ask for an exception to that rule, because we're mandating developer tree and project trees and. They, if you're required to maintain, they get the water done. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand your concern. Unfortunately, it's not under the, it's not in the board's purview right now to to deal with that. So it seems, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, that are what we, um, according to um. The, the place that um, that we're in is that the planning board needs to take a vote on the agreement that was reached. And I would then recommend that a letter go forth to um, to the applicant. Um. Um, for additional feedback uh regarding the exact placement of the trees to minimize possible replacement of those trees. And maintenance of those trees in the future.
Uh, yeah, that, yeah, that will confirm, you know, I think at this point, uh, looking at the, the litigation and the agreements. Um, I think someone, yeah, uh, that it makes that. The planning board uh should take a vote on this uh with the help of uh Attorney Kenefik. Uh, and then uh, in the meantime, I will draft up a letter to the applicant uh asking indoor requesting that we um modify the vegetation. Um, as we just spoke about in the meeting, to a more native, native plants. Um, and also um, a a mix of, I believe, uh, native evergreen hedges, uh, and so. Uh, but that would have to be done after, after a planning board vote, uh, if I'm correct, uh, Attorney Kenefik.
Yeah, I mean, you you can just approach them after this and say, listen, you know, this vegetation might be, you know, in the long run, more beneficial for you, because it's, it has a higher likelihood of success, so.
Okay, any other for?
The board doesn't really have the authority to even require screening, so. Um, I I think it's just um. Something to reach out afterwards.
Understood. Is there any comment, any further comment by the planning board? If not, I will um. Call for a roll call vote. Um, I will make a motion to. Approve the three eleven Pleasant Street special permit. Peter's the only one we need to approve, or we need to approve them separately, just especially.
We need to approve the separate, uh, the site plan approval and the special permit separately, so it'll be.
Yes.
Okay, so that we will uh make a motion to approve the three eleven Pleasant Street special permit. Um. As modified.
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
If I'm good, I.
Anna Testman, it's D I.
My server, hi.
Catherine Jersey, upstate.
Um. Is that, is that our, is that the proper? I think Kevin was here for that one, right? Um. So is that the proper voting board, the current board?
Yep, the current board opens tonight, it passes four, four zero, uh, four zero one.
Okay, all right, just wanna, just wanna make sure we're doing things appropriately. All right, so that would pass four zero one. Um, I will also make a motion. Um. To approve the three eleven Pleasant Street um site plan review. Is there a second?
I'll second up.
And a roll call vote?
If I'm good, I.
Anna Testman, it's D I.
My server, hi.
And.
Jersey, upstate.
Sorry, and Tricia Kendall, I. And if I didn't officially vote on the last one, it's Tricia Kendall, I at the end of that one, too. I can't even remember if I voiced my. Vote, so, um. Okay, so those two motions passes. Peter, if you would, along with that, please um begin drafting a a letter. Um, to the applicant requesting um some feedback. Requesting some input on the exact planting of the trees for ease of maintenance and um proper uh growth of the trees.
I can take care of that, and I will finalize the decisions and send those up to the board. Uh, and it'd be great if uh folks can come in next week for signatures. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Attorney Kenefik.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. Moving on to item number C of the um. Public hearings is. public hearings is a 300, 300 Elliott Street Site Plan Review. This is this is the Bank of America building. Well, Peter, why don't I let you just explain briefly what it is?
Sure. Excuse me. So, yeah, 300 Elliott appears on the agenda is a modification of the already, of the previously, excuse me, a previously approved planning board site plan. About December 2020, Bank of America came in and they were asking and were approved to implement two, two parking lot lights to add some visibility to their drive-through, which was in need of some, which was, was proposed to meet Bank of America's, well, to bring the site to meet Bank of America's requirements regarding drive-throughs. With that said, no work had been done. And then also with the work along Pond Street, there was a takings at that property. So therefore, some of the parking lot was removed by Mass DOT. The applicant has to relocate the light. And so therefore, he is modifying the site plan. In reviewing the site plan, I had to make, I made some further requests for some information to be added. And so with that said, the applicant care of Bill Sharkey has requested a continuance to September 8th. And in that time period, I am expecting revised site plans to be submitted, which I can then circulate up to the planning board. So at this point in time, I would be asking the planning board to grant a continuance as requested by the applicant to September 8th, 2022.
Yeah, I think in looking at the drawings that were submitted, I just thought it, it could be made a little bit more clear so that we don't end up spending a lot of time discussing such a small issue. And so I wanted the documentation to be as clear as possible. Peter talked to the applicant about that. They, they were fine with that. And so that is why it would be continued. Any questions? Right. On that note, I will make a motion to continue 300 Elliott Street Site Plan Review Modification to, when did you say, Peter? September?
September 8th.
Until September 8th. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Ebon, aye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Marcelo, I think you were muted.
Happens from time to time. Marcelo, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that passes 500. That will be continued until September 8th. All right, so item D on the agenda, I should say, item D in our public hearing process. This is the opening of a new public hearing. 399 Union Street Site Plan Review. This is the proposed, first viewing of the proposed new Starbucks restaurant at the current Walgreens building in downtown or in the downtown area. Peter, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Sure. I'll take this. So the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear the petition of Retail Ashland LLC requesting site plan review and design review per Chapter 40A, Section 6, the Massachusetts zoning act, per Chapter 282, 89.6, Design Review, and 4.9 Site Plan Review, the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is proposing construction of a fast food drive-through Starbucks restaurant, including the demolition of the existing structure and the construction of a new 2,575 square foot building. This includes a drive-through and the outside seating area. The property in question is located at 399 Union Street. It says there's map 20 lot 009 and is within the industrial zoning district. All parties wish to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the Ashland Planning Board ahead of time and appear or the, excuse me, and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed by appointment at Town Hall during normal business hours and/or on the town website through the Ashland Planning Board page, through the current projects. For more information to be, excuse me, for more information or to submit comments, please contact Peter Magic, myself, at my phone number and my email address. This application is, just to introduce the application at this point. Number one, I would like to introduce Jerry Efrin. He is the attorney for the case. Additionally, Greg Gregory Salvador, he is the property owner. And I believe I will pass this along to Jerry to introduce the rest of their team. With this said, I think everyone knows this site as Walgreens. This site originally, and I think Jerry will, Attorney Efrin will, will speak to this. This site was, as it is today, was permitted by the Ashland Planning Board and the Ashland Zone of Appeals back in 2001, 2002. And it has been a, first a Brooks Pharmacy, then a Rite Aid, and then it transformed into a Walgreens. And so at this point, this applicant is here to apply for the demolition of the existing building and the development of a new 2,500 square foot Starbucks. Before I hand it over to the applicant, Planning Board member Anna Tesmenitsky, you would like to speak?
Just a very, very brief comment, just for the sake of transparency. I just wanted to let the planning board and the public know and the applicant as well. I don't know Attorney Efrin, if you remember me, but I believe I was employed by you back in high school. I don't think I've seen you since high school. But I just want to make sure that that's transparent. I don't think any of that is an issue today. But I, I did want that very openly transparent for the public that I, I do know Attorney Efrin personally. I have had no contact and I don't believe there's any conflict. And certainly if the applicant has any concerns about it or any member of the public, I wanted to make sure that that was clear from the get-go.
Thank you.
And I don't, I don't have any business interests or financial connection to Attorney Efrin or his office.
Yep.
Since high school.
That doesn't sound like anything that the state needs to be notified on.
It does not, but I wanted the public to be aware so that there was no impression of, of not telling
Understood.
Of a prior connection that could be interpreted by some as nepotism. So I wanted to make sure it was very clear for the public.
Understood. Thank you.
So with that said, thank you, Anna. I would hand the, in chair, if you're all right, I would like to hand the presentation over to the application team to Mr. Attorney Jerry Efrin.
Thank you, Peter. For the record, my name is Jerry Efrin. I am an attorney with offices right here in Ashland, Mass. And I am less than 200 yards west of this site with which I am intimately familiar, having been in my office since 1984. This property is located 399 Union Street. Mr. Magic accurately summarized the events historically that led us to today. And I should point out to you that Walgreens, as many of you may know, is undergoing, undergoing a nationwide consolidation of its facilities. Their lease was coming up for ending or renewal in the spring of 2023. They notified Mr. Salvatore that they would not be renewing the lease. And Mr. Salvatore started to look for new occupants. He has had prior dealings with Starbucks with respect to other properties that he owns and was fortunate enough to get them finally interested in coming to Ashland, Massachusetts. And they have finalized a long-term leasing arrangement and are extremely excited about the possibilities of this location. In connection with what is going on here, there is a building that was constructed in 2003. It's approximately 9,750 square feet. It's been consistently used for the pharmacy use. It, it has accompanied and been equipped with a drive-through since the time of its inception. It has three access ways, two on Union Street and one on Summer Street. There is no proposed change to the access and egress ways. There is no proposal for any new or additional curb cuts. This particular use, under the current zoning bylaw, required a special permit, both for the fast food restaurant use and the drive-through. Even though the drive-through is currently there, we made a determination that the special permit was required because that drive-through was never used incidental to a fast food restaurant. We filed applications for special permits with the Zoning Board of Appeals and public hearings were held before that board on August 9th and August 23rd, which concluded this past Tuesday with an affirmative unanimous vote issued the special permits under the zoning bylaw permitting the use of the property for a fast food restaurant and for a drive-through facility. They received the same filings that you received and were notified, of course, that if in fact, they approve this, that we would be here at our next stop. We also will need to make a filing with the Conservation Commission, which will be underway shortly. We did prior to filing and preparing any plans have the ability to meet with all of the boards that were interested in reviewing this sometime in the spring in a meeting that we were grateful that Peter organized. We received feedback from many departments and to the extent we could, that feedback was incorporated in the proposal that you are going to initiate review of this evening. We also made arrangements, knowing the process as we all do, to have your planner be able to contract for both traffic review and engineering peer review, made deposits into the town accounts for those and had those reviews initiated. We were notified late yesterday afternoon that the traffic review was just received. Both myself and our team just read it today. We're not in a position to speak substantively to the response other than to tell you that we will make an appropriate detailed response. And we will have that response in with plenty of time to have the consultant be able to receive it, review it, and hopefully comment back before we reconvene before you. With me tonight is Greg Salvatore, the owner and manager of Retail Ashland LLC. He has owned the property for over 20 years and is the owner and developer of the property at this particular point. Also here and who will be doing the bulk of the presenting tonight is Scott Rogers, our civil engineer from JK Holgrim, and Emily Buck from McMahon Associates, our traffic engineer. We know along the way, because this is new construction, that we'll also be making a stop at Design Review. With any redevelopment, and this one in particular, one of the elements that happens that's a benefit hopefully to the municipality is you get the advantage of upgraded technologies, upgraded best practices, and that really will have positive environmental impacts. There'll be enhancements of lighting, stormwater, more green space, things that I know that this board expects on any redevelopment. We hope after the presentation is concluded and the give and take occurs over the course of the meetings that will follow, that you will have a plan in the end that you can be very proud of, that you'll be able to welcome Starbucks to the community. That is a very interesting location, being almost at the precipice of when the marathon runners come by. It's a very important location for the town of Ashland. And hopefully, we can together convince you that approval here would be warranted, that you'll be able to satisfy the criteria for approval and that we'll be able to be on our way with a very good project. With that in mind, I would, I would be happy to turn it over with your permission to Scott Rogers to take you through the plan.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, speak up, Scott.
I will. Thank you. For the record, my name is Scott Rogers from JK Holgrim Engineering. And I want to introduce the project to you tonight. It is, as was mentioned, an existing pharmacy. The topography of the land generally slopes in an easterly direction. As was mentioned.
Peter's got able to share his screens or to show the drawings?
Yep, Scott, you're a co-host. You're happy. We're happy to have you share your screen.
Thank you. All right. As Jerry had mentioned, there are three existing curb cuts which will remain in place. The site currently has 40 existing parking spaces, and that includes three ADA spaces. The site has all the utilities in place that are obviously used for the pharmacy. Some of those will be reused. Some of those will be modified and improved. Going to the, the site materials plan. As was mentioned, it's obviously a coffee shop with a drive-through. There are 42 proposed parking spaces and that includes four new ADA spaces. There are spaces available for mobile order only and spaces available for employee parking only. We obviously are proposing a drive-through. Typically, what we've found from our experience is that drive-throughs that are built throughout the state, towns and cities have very small sites and stacking for drive-throughs don't typically match up to what's required. I'm sure most of us have been to other coffee shops or banks where you're in line and you end up being in the street and causing traffic issues. We feel that this does not apply to this particular site. We have 12 cars which will get you from the drive-through window all the way down to the island which is located on the, the south side of Union Street. But there are additional spaces that could be used, and I don't think that's going to be necessary, but there are additional spaces that could be used on-site which will get you about another five or six spaces. So you would be on the property and not into an adjacent roadway. Our experience is also that, you know, when you're in line for, you know, 12 to 17 cars waiting for a coffee or an ATM, at, at some point, you're going to say, I'm just going to park the car and drive in and go inside the store or the, the bank. So we feel we have good queuing ability for this particular site, better than a lot of ones that I've seen. We have a bypass lane next to the drive-through lane, and that's 10 feet wide. So if someone does get stuck in that lane, they're not going to drive through. They have the ability to to not wait for those cars and, and get around to get through. We have improved pedestrian traffic both on-site and connections to existing walkways, both on Union Street and on Summer Street. We also have improved with some help discussions with the town engineer, some site visibility areas, specifically the, the draw, the curb cut, which is on the eastern side of Union Street. Some additional improvements we made were an improved pedestrian connection from the northern side of the store by the outdoor seating area that connects you to the existing sidewalk on Summer Street. We also have some additional amenities that we provided here. Obviously, the ADA parking with the appropriate ramps, outdoor dining facility and bike racks are shown on the plan as well. In as far as grading of the site, generally, we're not proposing to change a lot of the site grading. It's pretty much as is and won't be changing, maybe inches, not feet. There are, there's a large existing underground infiltration system which is located on the western side of the site, showing with this rectangle, kind of on the apex between Union Street and Summer Street. We are in the process of continually maintaining that maintenance system for that underground infiltration system. And that we have provided an O and M plan with our drainage report as well to document those specific requirements that we're proposing to continue on. Under the mass stormwater manual guidelines, this would be considered a redevelopment in the fact that we are decreasing pavement and we are increasing green space. We're also adding some low-impact developments, some LID techniques, which is in the form of a bio-retention area located on the northern corner near Summer Street. And that essentially will be taking the exist, or the proposed footprint, which is a relatively small building footprint, and that'll be discharged into that bio-retention area. That bio-retention area has been appropriately sized with drainage calculations with Hydracad. And that will handle the 100-year storm, up to and including the 100-year storm event. So with the improvements to the drainage system, the decrease in pavement and the increase in the green space, we will be decreasing both peak runoff rates and also volumes for this particular site. As I had kind of highlighted to you before, the utilities on the site are going to be improved. We're going to be upgrading and improving the telephone electric and data services to the, to the property, to the building. There is an existing gas line. We are going to propose to extend that. We'll work with the gas company if we need to, you know, change out the gas line completely and upgrade that. We certainly will do that. That'll be discussions with the gas company as we get further along in the process. We're also going to be extending the existing gap, existing water line, pardon me, it's a two-inch line existing. And as far as sewer, we are proposing an interior grease trap. And as far as sewer, we are proposing uh an interior grease trap. I should probably note to you that uh Starbucks is not. I don't want to use the word restaurant because they really don't cook food. Um, a lot of the food is, you know, prepackaged donuts and bagels. Um, so it's not really a restaurant where you have uh fryolators and things like that. Uh, but we are proposing an interior grease trap. And then we do have a sewer manhole as well as some new piping that'll. Direct you back towards the existing sewer stub, which we're going to maintain and upgrade if we need to onto uh Summer Street. And then as far as erosion control. We are proposing uh to install silt saw, which is um. You know, what straw wattles, if you will, uh to protect protect the site from any sediment or erosion, potential erosion. We're also going to be protecting existing and new proposed uh catch basins with silt sacks. Which is like an inlet filter fabric which will help protect the existing system. Uh, from any sediment reaching there and clogging out the existing uh infiltration basin. And we are proposing some other typical uh erosion control. Sediment control devices such as a stabilized construction entrance. Or exit, which will basically allow the trucks leaving the vehicle to. Not leave the vic, uh not leave the site with dirt soil on their tires and and create the road. Uh, you know, to be dirty, so that that helps with with that particular part of construction. As far as uh the landscape development improvements that we're making. Um, we are proposing and they're shown with with hatching. Uh, new sod islands with shrubs in them as well. Also some new street and shade trees on the property. And we're proposing some new foundation plantings around the proposed building. We are going to be keeping and maintaining the existing green areas which are pretty much located on the uh western side. Adjacent to Union Street and to Summer Street. But we're proposing to basically make some improvements as far as new mulch. New pruning, fertilizing uh shrubs and and the grass. And doing a general cleanup which will make the property look even better than it does today. Um, as far as lighting, we're going to be using the existing lights that we have, but there are a couple light poles we'll be adding in here. Uh, one will be located in the northern uh landscaped island. And one will be located on the southern end of the parking area adjacent to the uh the southern end of the building to provide more uh lighting for that parking lot. Closest of building there. And those will be L I LED lights. We have a lighting plan that was included with the submission package as well. Um, I think with that, I'll probably turn it back over to attorney Effron.
Thank you. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure uh. How you want us to proceed. We weren't necessarily planning unless you want to. In light of the recent receipt of traffic report. Um, to do anything other than give you this overview tonight, but of course we can uh. Take whatever questions anybody might have at this particular point.
Thank you. Um, the planning board hasn't had a chance to review that traffic report yet, so we won't really get into that tonight until we've actually had a chance to look at it. Um, I think at this point, um. I'm looking for just general questions from the board in order to better understand what we're seeing here. And I think we want to outline, um. You know, given that again, this is the just the introduction to this project. Um, but to start to outline areas of question or concern. That we want to look at more deeply in future meetings. Um, I just, uh my my want my question to start with, I'll I'll just start things out here. The um, the drive through wa- works in a counterclockwise direction. Is that right?
That is correct.
Can you then explain to me? The use. And and I know it's existing, but the used, the use of the utmost right hand curb cut. How do you see that being used? Seems like someone would be cutting into the drive through line or. How how is that used? What's that used for?
So that'll be remaining as is, but it'll be an entrance and then also. An exit, a full service, uh full access curb cut.
I think Tricia, what you're asking, that person would have to go around the people on the drive through to get to the parking area.
Is is that you would enter and then go, you wouldn't be able to get into the drive through line, is that correct? You would have to go around and get in line?
That is correct.
Okay, and um. And for an exit as well, you would be circulating cir- circulating around the building in order to get. In order to get out, maybe if there's a line on Union Street waiting at the light or some reason like that, is that? I'm I'm wondering about the reason for keeping that curb cut, um, i- if it has other purposes in in maintaining it.
I think you highlighted the the areas, if you want, Emily could probably expand upon that as far as the traffic point of view, but.
I I think we can, we can wait for general uh to get into it in any depth. I want to just my own understanding to to understand that um that curb cut. Um, are there any other just points of clarification that people are needing from the presentation as given?
I mean, I I don't have kind of clarification questions yet. I certainly have some kind of big picture things that I'm starting to think about. I don't know, Trish, if you wanna.
Yeah.
Go into that direction.
Yeah, I think this intro intro meeting is about kind of trying to looking at those big picture items or what are the.
Okay.
The big concerns that we mean to start making a list of to investigate more.
So I I'll start by saying that I think that I I'm. My reaction is I think there are some really exciting things about partnering um with Starbucks and and. I think it's important to focus and focus on some of those really exciting things as we think about. Um, integrating this project into our community. And there's a couple of things that jump out at me as I started looking at the project and thinking about. That partnership, the unique nature of that partnership and the location. Um, one thing is I know that Starbucks is very committed to net zero. Um, and has sign on to a net zero initiative to reach certain goals by twenty fifty. Um, I'm familiar with some of their work in Canada. They've built some net zero. They've used net zero construction to build stores. Um, and I think that would be really exciting to talk about as a planning board. We, the town of Ashland, have have a recent commitment to net zero. We had a vote, a town meeting to issue a resolution. And I personally think that this would be a great partner to seriously explore that with. Especially at that particular location that is so central to Union Street and to the Boston Marathon route. So that's number one. Um, number two is I I've seen Starbucks design its stores in a superbly unique fashion, so. You know, if you, anybody can can Google and look up some of the most beautiful Starbucks stores internationally, whether it's in Dubai or Mexico. We're not Dubai or Mexico, but we are Ashland, Massachusetts, and we're right on the one thirty five route, which is the Boston Marathon, and we're that very. I think fascinating corner, um, an entranceway in some way to Ashland or one of our key elements. And I would love to talk about integrating that into our our vision of Ashland, what that could look like. That's unique to us. That's beautiful to us. Um, and then the other two elements I'm thinking about is is the use of that green space. To encourage those connections to the community, whether it's a view viewing area in the front. In that corner for the Boston Marathon. Or integrating uh the Starbucks space more with the Stone Park connection. There's a park right across the street on Summer Street. With some playground space, um, and I think that the community members, families, children that use that space. Would certainly enjoy crossing the street to be part of the Starbucks. Um, but I can see that area becoming very vibrant and I'd like to talk about that, the integration of this space to Stone Park. Maybe having green space that spills over from Stone Park. So that families have a commitment to crossing the street to be part of Starbucks, but also expanding that green play area that we have. Across from the Starbucks. And finally, I I'm very excited because I think Starbucks has a very good reputation as far as hiring. People with disability. It's one of the strongest companies in the business for doing that. And I I do want to explore that partnership as well, um, and integrate that in our into our community. Those are some of the things I'm thinking about.
Right, it's a good list. Thanks, Anna.
I I would just, I I would just, uh, I'm sorry, did I, did I cut off?
No, no, I I saw that you, uh, I saw that your um microphone had gone off, so that you figured you were ready.
Yeah, no, I I I I don't have a lot to add to Anna's list because I think it's excellent and I like everything she said. Um, I I have only one concern in in my experience. I I I see nothing but positive for the town to. Partner with uh Starbucks in these locations specifically. And I think just everything that's being proposed, just as a concept, is a huge improvement to that lot. And I think it's going to have a like a domino effect on the businesses around that area, so I think it's all good. My my personal experience with the site. I I've I've never been thrilled about these curb cuts for some reason. I I I I think I find them a little awkward in location. So my only question or something to think maybe for the traffic engineer uh is, and I assume that. Changing curb cuts is probably complicated and I see why they wouldn't want to do it. But I I I just, I would like to understand. Uh, that process and whether the curb cuts just are my maintaining because procedurally is the 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 best way to do it. Um, or if they're really in the place that they need to be.
Yeah, I think that's a good point as well, Marcelo. I I found them awkward um myself. Um, and is there any other comments you want to make at this time, Marcelo?
Uh, no, no, I'll go with Anna's list. I like it.
Okay, um. Kate Deepa?
Yeah, I I pretty much can say I um I did all of that. I think it's. Um, with attorney Effron's presentation and kind of making excitement about that site. I hope we can can get it to be really that. That site when I, and I think there's opportunity for some public space there, right, with instead of. Uh, what I would like to see us go is instead of just landscaping, making some public space there, acknowledging that not everybody in our community can. Can um afford to shop there or maybe not all the time, but it still can be integrated in our community, particularly taking. Taking the park into consideration. And then uh just ditto again on Marcelo's about the traffic. Are we getting the best thing we can?
Thanks, Kate. Um. Let's see who's left on my list. Deepa, Kevin, any?
I'm not sure I have much to add than what. I think Anna had an extensive list. She covered majority of the points, and I feel like what. For me is the context of the building with reference to all that's happening around, especially the Stone Park and really making it a public space. Um, and being on the marathon route, really making it kind of much more and. Feature than kind of really a utilitarian space. So right now it feels like that's such an important location. We can really do. Um. Amazing things with that particular property and I guess. They are started off on the right path. It looks like. It's a very welcome change. I think we could really have that and. For me, it's the context that this building is and which needs a little bit of refinement. To see how it connects to that Stone Park across the street and all the other uh retail that's around.
Thanks, Deepa. Um, Kevin, did you want to weigh in or are you good?
I I think I'd pile on what everybody else has said mostly. Um, I I think it would be good to. Look at the green space, um. And see if there is. A requirement for all this parking that that's here, or if we could even expand some of the green space and then only to look at those curb cuts, um. I know that there's there are sightlines coming out of this parking lot and coming from the plaza across the street of that. Plaza across the street is very dangerous. Um, I think we had a fatality there a year or two ago. Um, so just how this would impact. You know, i- it's an extra place for people calling out of that plaza to have to look if there's cars coming out of the Starbucks. Um, in front of them, people go very fast on Union Street and it's it's kind of blind in both directions, so. Um, I think we need to really pay attention to that.
Right, good point. Um. Okay, I thi- I think that's a a good list for Starbucks to move forward with. I would just add after everyone else's comments. Kind of rehashing a few things. One is, is the traffic, I think, um. Um, ob- obviously, there's there's already a lot of people go to this re- this area for a lot of different reasons, so it it's already a heavily trafficked area. Um, but being making sure Starbucks can contain the flow. Um, especially in that drive through line, um, in order not to disturb the the neighborhood, which becomes residential very quickly um down Summer Street. Um, so to pay special attention to that, it will be coming up as an issue. I'd also like to see in future diagrams of traffic, just. It'd be nice to see, um, you know, the average length car kind of cu- cartooned into that traffic line. Um, we can be told how many cars are in there, but it's nice to actually see a visual of 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 those vehicles in there. I think it's easier to understand. Um, that was point one. Point two on the vegetation, just um. Obviously, I know this is just a, this is just a starter of where we are here. Um, as we move forward, um, given discussions we've had in other projects, we want to make sure. Um, that uh vegetation that is going in is both is native. Um, typical projects we're looking for, I'm gonna throw this out there, I don't think it's a hard and fast number, but seventy five percent or greater. Of of native plants and so, um, and that number may change. Don't, don't hold me to it. Um, but we're looking for a high percentage um of of native plants, and so that would be a good place for your landscape designers to start when they start looking at that. Um, and indeed, the sustainability committee in Ashland is. Both uh both in terms of plants and in terms of net zero, they are producing a checklist. Um, that we intend to use both on the planning board and to pass along to uh to applicants. In order to um bring their projects to that level, make sure that we're on the same page. It sounds like Starbucks already goes down that road, so I hope that will be a very um successful conversation. So um, o- on those notes, um. I will open it up to public comment for about the next ten to fifteen minutes and I will. Let um, I will let uh Peter manage that process. If he's lurking there somewhere.
No, I am sorry. I have my microphone off.
Sorry, you weren't on my screen.
No, it's okay. Uh, so we have four people with their hands up, uh, and the first is Miss Hannah Stein. Um, Miss Hannah Stein, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the planning board with your name and address.
Hello, yes, I am Hannah Stein. I live at Six Coburn Drive in Ashland. I have lived here for over twenty years. So Ashland is my home. I think that my comment uh at this preliminary point would be that I really like what I'm hearing. But I would just like to add that. It seems to me this uh particular redevelopment is an opportunity for Ashland to. Raise its standard of um what is expected in terms of, as many have mentioned, the green space, um, you know, the. Coordination with the community, with the people using facilities on uh in Summer Street. So I would just like to say that I would like to um add to the conversation here that. This could become an example for the future of Ashland in terms of. The many buildings that may be rehabbed or replaced over the next ten to twenty years. And I would like to see uh that be a part of the conversation. So where are we going in the future and and how can this maybe take us a step or two in that direction? Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, the next up uh with their hand raised is Kathy Rooney. Kathy Rooney, can you please uh unmute yourself and introduce yourself? To the planning board with your name and address.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Kathy Rooney, one thirty six Fountain Street. Um, so, um, I'm gonna echo the comments of the previous speaker and also. Tricia, Anna and Deepa. M- made about um some of the plantings and the traffic and the curb cuts. Um, and I'm gonna ask a couple of things. I'm actually wondering if this wouldn't be a good place to. Install a rotary. Because of the traffic that's expected at this. Site and we already know the traffic going in and out of the. The plaza across the street is pretty heavy. Plus, we have a light there and it just seems like this is going to be crazy once the Starbucks goes in. Um, there's a new Starbucks on Route nine and they routinely come very close to having traffic. Out onto Route nine. And they've got a long queue of vehicles. So I don't expect that this is Route nine, gets traffic of Route nine, but I'm would not be surprised if this location gets a boatload of traffic because. You know, it's a convenient location to drive through and pick up your coffee and go. So that's, that's one of my concerns. Um. I'm also um wondering why we can't. wondering why we can't start using the underground water storage system to take that water and use it on the landscape plantings and will end up into that system again. And then I can go eventually down, you know, perking to the aquifer because it seems to me that if we're already collecting the water, then we should be reusing it, especially given what's going on with the droughts. And there's a fair amount of parking there, which really concerns me, but there's going to be a large amount of hardscaping, no matter what happens on the site and collecting the water is admirable, but we should be reusing it in the plantings. Dark sky is another thing that I'm very concerned about. And I'm hoping that this project is cognizant of that. And I'm excited that we're going to get a Starbucks in Ashland at this location. Because I think as Attorney Efron said and other people have echoed that this is a very important site for Ashland. And I'm hoping that we can turn it into something really special. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney.
Just a note, Peter, before we continue is that I see Joel's hand, I think, is the last one. And so that's going to be the line of where we have public comment tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. To continue on, Mr. Mark DeSoni, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Introduce yourself to the planning board, your name and address, please.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoni, 849 Hawthorne Road. Yes, I'm going to bring up, I was at the zoning board meeting and I kind of brought up not the right questions right there, but I think I'm going to be right here. The, yes, the traffic, the entrance exits and the parking. It's all going to be issues. I'm also wondering on the site itself, what's is the building that's there now, the Walgreens Rite Aid? Is everyone coming down and going to be changed? Or is it going to stay and be worked in? Other one is would be the water, the zoning, it's part of the water and all that. But the planning board is the buffers and the width and the parking spaces. Would the parking spaces be changed? Are they going to be the same? Okay, and one last one would be the is there going to be any sort of a walk-in restaurant with the drive-through? And how much of the old Walgreen building is going to be torn down and reshaped to have that in place? Those questions I'm going to ask, I want to see if anything, but I was going to answer any of them. Or you're going to wait until you get to a special permanent?
No, thank you, Mark. We will have the applicant can quickly answer those questions, but then we'll move on to the next speaker. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Efron, are those questions that you would be answering?
I could not hear all of the questions except for the few. This is proposed as a demolition of the existing building and the creation of a new structure. So we're not going to be utilizing any portion of the building. I didn't hear, I could not hear the other questions.
I think one of the questions was about the parking spaces. The parking is going to be reworked as well, is that correct?
The parking plan that's laid out on the plans is a complete reworking of the current parking plan because the current parking plan had to accommodate a small amount of compact spaces around a much larger building. This parking pan is designed to change the parking plan to accommodate the queuing and access and egress from the site and within the site. So it is a completely new parking plan.
Peter, did you catch any of the other questions?
No, I think, I think, I think the questions were all answered by Attorney Efron.
Okay. If there's any more, we can Mark can catch us at a later planning board meeting. Right.
With that said, the next person up is Ms. Roberta Solman. Can you please unmute yourself and introduce us? Introduce yourself to the planning board with your name and address.
Sure. Roberta Solman, 28 Woodridge Lane in Ashland. I agree with the things that people said about how wonderful this partnership could in theory be. And people on the planning board and other folks have talked about the corporate citizenship of Starbucks. I just want us not to forget that the National Labor Relations Board has said that the Starbucks CEO, Howard Schultz, is trying to discourage union organizing, which is a violation of law. So far, they fired more than 85 union leaders and a federal judge has ordered them at this point to reinstate seven of them. The NLRB has issued 21 official complaints against Starbucks, 81 charges and 548 allegations of labor law violations. With the House Labor Caucus saying that this is worker intimidation at its worst. So there's a flip side to this corporation and a flip side to how they do business. I don't want us to forget that because the workers that they're going to be hiring and potentially preventing from unionizing could be your fellow neighbors and could be your friends, your kids, other people that you know in Ashland. It's just really important for us to keep that in perspective. And it's really important for us not, not to forget that. While at the same time, I totally acknowledge and respect the owner's right, Mr. Rogers' right to develop his property and to make money. He's a businessman and I get that. But I am deeply concerned about the other, the dark side of Starbucks and hope that we can do better here.
Thank you for your insight. Next up, and the last person that will speak tonight on this project will be Joel Arbitman. Joel, can you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the planning board with your name and address?
Yes, sure. Certainly. My name is Joel Arbitman, 28 Woodridge Lane in Ashland. I have about four very quick points I want to raise that I have heard only one. Well, a couple of them have been mentioned and discussed in a little bit of detail. The first is that no one has mentioned the fact that this area is flooded with similar businesses. We might like Starbucks, we might not like Starbucks, some use it, some don't. We have right within less than a quarter of a mile, we have Dunkin' Donuts, a Honeydew Donuts. If we're talking about it being more of a restaurant style thing, we have Moro's right across the street that's trying to survive after the pandemic and it's right there in such an amazingly proximate area that this is going to be devastating to their business. We have Sunnyside that has a questionable business model, being an old timey place, and we even have the bagel table. Well, you know, how many coffee shops do we need? Whether this is a good one or not, you know, do we have no regard at all for our existing businesses? They're part of the Ashland business community. And I think we need to to think carefully before we bring in a national chain like Starbucks. We really could put an end to a lot of those businesses, which would include a lot of jobs for Ashland residents. On the traffic thing, I think I very much agreed with Marcelo and Tricia's comments. I'm very, very concerned. No one here has mentioned the anticipated traffic volume. No one's mentioned that. Right now, and you can make your own study, I go to Walgreens all the time. When I go there, there are times I'm the only car on the lot, or sometimes there are two or three others. You put a Starbucks in there and start dumping traffic in and out off of Route 135 and it's an entirely different ballgame. So I'm very concerned. I would like to see those access points, those curb cuts closed off. It's too dangerous being right near that crazy intersection with the Y intersection that backs up already at Cherry and Summer. The traffic light at 135 and the exit and entrance going in and out of the CVS plaza. I think it's a very bad location to have a high-volume business having curb cuts on 135. I'd much rather see the exit coming on Summer Street. And I'm even concerned about perhaps not allowing a left turn coming out and making the cars turn right toward the post office. And then they can use Park Road or Downtown Ashland to get back to 135 or wherever they might be going. That's it on the traffic. In an earlier hearing tonight, I think it was Anna brought up the possibility with McDonald's of maybe putting in a bike rack. I'd like to ask for that. We in Ashland are trying to encourage more walking and biking. We talk about climate change and net zero. Well, let's make sure that people who want to can bike there and safely store their bike while they go in to get to get a meal or get a coffee. So let's look at adding bike racks. And finally, I just want to really highlight some of the points Roberto was making very briefly. Starbucks is a horrible employer. I mean, you know, they may, they may treat some of their workers well. There are I will try to send the board some documentation of what's been going on. But this is national news being commented on some of the very top elected leaders in the country. You know, they just had a court decision forcing them to rehire people they illegally fired. So I would love to see the planning board, I don't know what's possible here. But I've been, I talked to a friend who said you might be able to build in something in the, in the agreement with Starbucks that they would have to remain neutral, completely neutral in any kind of union action or union negotiations with their employees. So if that's feasible, I see Mr. Efron shaking his head no, but I think that we should pursue that as best we're able to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arbitman. Tricia, we have one more hand raised. I know it went up and then it came down and then went back up.
I will allow it, but with a two-minute, we really have to keep it short because we do have another public hearing tonight. Mr. Gazzard, are you able to have a quick question and save other comments to another meeting?
I am. Thank you. Chris Gazzard, 21 Park Road, Ashland. So I am not in the butter, but certainly very close and and all due respect, I would hate to see people take a right turn out and head down Summer onto Park Road and cut back to 135. So all due respect, but Park Road has become a superhighway as it is. And while I love the ideas that Anna said, the planning board has some great ideas. I would also stress traffic and the curb cuts and rearrange that because we're terrified. Cherry Street, my neighbors on Cherry, Summer Park, we're terrified of what that could bring via traffic, especially for what's coming down the road too with the next event. But lastly, I would say if they could partner with Stone Park, making the the sidewalks on Summer and Cherry are a mess. I hope Cherry will be addressed with the quiet zone. But Summer Street, they have, they don't have granite curbing. I think it would tie in nicely, at least down to Linden, and maybe the town picks up the rest down to Homer or Main. But that would be my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, knowing that we still have one more small project to actually discuss this evening. Peter, when would we be looking to continue this too? Would this be the second meeting in September?
This would be the second meeting in September. So as I've already discussed with Attorney Efron, I think it makes sense for the board and for the applicant to agree to continue the application.
Peter, just a little louder, please.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. So at this point, I think I've already had contact and conversations with Attorney Efron. But I think at this point, it makes sense to move this until the second meeting in December, excuse me, September, which would be September 22.
Can I just ask for one thing before we do that?
Real quick, Anna.
Would it be appropriate to ask Peter, obviously with input from the other members of the board? There's kind of two data points that I thought would be helpful for the board for next, next round. One is I do, I do want to get a glimpse of the complete streets plan relative to this area. I think the points that we've heard from the public as far as the the integration with Stone Park that I had mentioned and the streets component, the sidewalks nearby, I think that'd be helpful to get from Peter and Emma. What sidewalks in that vicinity that we as a town have not yet repaired, completed, et cetera? I think that would be beneficial to the board's consideration of this project. And then in addition, any public spaces at Stone Park that need repair or expansion, you know, age of the playgrounds, anything like that, I'd like to discuss that as well as far as integrating this project relative to Stone Park across the street. And the last point I'll make is I think this is a real opportunity for the town. I am very familiar with the news. And if anything, I think it underlines the opportunity here to be a real partner with Starbucks.
Great, thank you. I mean, I think, I think as we move forward to the next meeting, I think the themes that have come up again and again that we need, that need to be addressed first and foremost are really the ideas of of traffic, of connection to the community, respect for the community, curb cuts, parking. That, that if we can assume no matter what those end up to be, we're going to be looking for a great design of a building. But first and foremost, it has to fit like a glove into, into our community. So I would ask that the applicant take the closest look at that and be ready to talk about it in detail for the next meeting as a primary, as a primary discussion point. With that said, I will make a motion to continue continue the 399 Union Street Site Plan Review until the second meeting in September, which is September
22.
I'm sorry, what was it?
22.
22, September 22.
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, hang it high.
Anna Testman, it's key, I.
Not so long, I.
And Tricia? Oh, I'm sorry, Kate. And so, Tricia can die. So that is continued until September 22.
Thank you. Just real quick, Attorney Efron, can you please send me email confirming that request so I can file that with the town clerk?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Planning board, before we go on, do you want a couple minute break? Or are you wanting to just go?
I mean, I would appreciate a five-minute break to get some water and reset. I think that's a good idea.
All right, it is 9:04. We will reconvene in five minutes. 9:09, be there, be square. Okay, it is 9:09. Do we have almost everyone back from the planning board? All right. I think we are, I think the planning board is back. We are on item E of our, of our public hearings, and that is the beginning of the 10 to 60 Main Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. To begin that process, Peter Matrick will read the public hearing notice. Peter?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Can everyone hear me? Okay, so the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear the petition of Ashland Properties LLC requesting Design Plan Review, Site Plan Review per Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter 282, Section 8.5, Ashland Downtown District. Section 9.6, Ashland Design Plan Review and Site Plan Review per Section, excuse me, and 9.4, Site Plan Review of the Ashland Bylaws. This also will include special permits within the Section 8.5, the Ashland Downtown District. The applicant is proposing the renovation of the two most northerly existing buildings and the addition of three new buildings along Main Street to provide 30,000 square feet of commercial space, 200 apartments, apartment units and 378 parking spaces. The property in question is located at 1060 Main Street, Cessars Map, 14 lot 128. The property is within the industrial zoning district, the Ashland Downtown District SubArea A, the Floodplain Overlay District and the Silver, Solar Overlay District. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comment to the Ashland Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed by appointment at the Town Hall during normal business hours or at Ashland websites under current cases that lives in the Planning Board site. For more information or to submit comments, please contact myself, Peter Matrick, Ashland Town Planner. And it lists my phone number and my email address, pmatrick, M A T C A K, at ashlandmass.com. This public hearing is for the property in the downtown area. Before I move forward and introduce the application team, I'm going to hand the microphone over to the Chair of the Planning Board, Tricia Kendall. Your absolute Tricia.
That's a great way to start. I just wanted to make a, a brief kind of statement for this project. This project is obviously not only one of the, one of large scale and high complexity, but is also likely one of the most important and potentially transformative projects to come before the Ashland Planning Board in many years. It's therefore not unexpected that there have been a lot of various questions, comments and concerns coming from residents as we begin this process. And I think that will continue well into the future. There's also some confusion, so I wanted to make a few comments upfront to hopefully answer a couple of those questions and concerns. First of all, though the project is currently in a demolition delay through the Ashland Historical Commission, neither the Planning Board nor the Planning Department have the authority to delay or deny the public hearing process due to the demolition delay. So that process is going forward. Second, the acceptance of the application and the start of the public hearing in no way means that the Planning Department nor the Planning Board approves the project. As a body, the board takes a neutral view of the project and final approval or disapproval happen only after the public hearing process is complete. Public hearings for projects of this size continue for many months. The project, the process is complex and involves input and review from the applicant's project team, various town boards and committees, external consultants, as well as the public. Public comment will often be allowed at these meetings, but sometimes it will not. In order to allow most number of voices, public comment will often be restricted in time for, in time per speaker. I understand that this can be frustrating and you are thus encouraged to email the Planning Board with any thoughts or information that you were unable to express at the meeting. These emails are tracked by the Planning Board Clerk and are read by all members of the Planning Board. If you have any additional procedural questions, I encourage you to write to the Planning Board, directing your questions to the Chair, and I will answer them as best I can in future meetings. Peter, I will send that back to you to introduce the project team.
All right. Thank you so much. So to introduce the project team, I'd first like to introduce the owner of the property, Mr. Rich Gordon. Second, the attorney for the project would be Mr. Joe Antonellis. Additionally, the architect and designer for the project is Mr. Scott Richardson. Craig Seymour is the Economic Development Analysis and Consultant. And Mr. George Connors appearing on screen is the Civil Engineer on the, on the project. So with that said, I am going to pass it to the application team. First introducing Mr. Rich Gordon. Rich, please introduce yourself, introduce your team. And, and we can get started. I will also make these share, screen sharing available to whomever that would like to show plans of the current building and the proposed site plan. So Mr. Gordon, please introduce yourself to the Planning Board and to the public.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Rich Gordon, and I've been the owner of 10 through 50 Main Street for the past 10 plus years. To begin, I'd like to thank the board for getting us on the agenda tonight and giving us the opportunity to present our plans to you for the Ashland Mills development. I'd like to start this off by giving you all a brief overview of the proposed project. This process started over three years ago when I was approached by Beth Reynolds and Mike Herbert to see if we'd be interested in being part of the planned Ashland redevelopment. I was very interested in this as I am not only the owner of the property, but I also live nearby and have a great interest in seeing downtown Ashland develop, grow into a more prosperous, vibrant area with more affordable housing and a greater business presence. Over the last two years, my team and I have been collaborating with several members of the town administration, some members of various local boards to come up with a plan that can achieve the economic growth goals set forth by the proposed downtown development. In that time, we've had many variations of the plans and we're now, that we are now presenting to the Planning Board. The highlights of the development are as follows. There will be 200 units of apartment housing, of which 25% will be affordable. There will also be over 30,000 square feet of mixed use space, which could be a variety of different businesses ranging from restaurants, gyms, retail, medical space, potentially a bakery and so on. We'll have a full-time shuttle bus available to all tenants to provide quick and easy transportation to the local commuter rail station. We're including in-site development, a park area and a walking path that will connect from Town Hall to the waterfall. The project will be as green as possible, which will also include solar on the roof with potential to give back some power to public facilities in addition to power in common areas of the development. There will also be a community room that will be available for not only the tenants, but for public use as well. We're planning on renovating and keeping 10 through 30 Main Street structurally and aesthetically the same, but with new amenities and all new buildout to meet current building codes. My team and I are very sensitive to the historical concerns with this property and doing our best to keep all the structural and historical integrity that's been part of this property for over 100 years. It's also in our development plans to reutilize as much of the granite from anywhere that is getting removed and rebuild it into other areas of the site. This would include reuse of the granite and new building facades, as well as for landscaping around the property and along the proposed walking path and park area. We're also going to do our best to work with existing tenants to help with their relocation needs that are going to arise. We'll be putting funds aside to help with this. In addition, we are offering existing tenants the option to rent in the future space at desirable rates. This is just a general overview of the project and plans. Our next speaker will be Joe Antonellis. He'll give you a more detailed description of the project and how we got to this juncture. Next, our architect Scott Richardson will be following up to give a more descriptive narrative on the building and the site plans. Lastly, our economic analysis consultant Craig Seymour will go over all of the economic analysis benefits that will come from this development. Thank you for the opportunity to letting us meet with you this evening, and I will now turn this over to Joe.
Good evening to everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to be very brief, the lateness of the hour and the depth and scope of this project. You don't need to hear too much from me, other than tell you that I'm, I'm a licensed attorney. I practice in Framingham, Massachusetts. I'm very familiar with the town of Ashland. While I have not been in front of your board in quite some time, I have done other projects in the town of Ashland, worked in the town when I was a kid at Nyansha. I know that that's not a favorite place of everybody in Ashland, but I did work there for a summer. And traveled through Ashland on a regular basis my whole life and recognize the unique aspects of your community. And saw this when Rich asked me to get involved. I saw this as an opportunity to get involved in a project that might have a significant impact on a community by the rehabilitation and rebirth of an old industrial area. And I think we all know that there aren't a whole lot of industrial uses that anybody wants in their towns any longer. So I, I got excited about that opportunity. As Rich said, we spent over two years working with people in the town of Ashland, specifically Michael Herbert and Peter have spent a significant amount of time with us, giving us guidance and direction and making certain that we understood the nuances of the downtown area. And I think that the project that you're going to see before you is one that has been well reasoned, well conceived and is our statement or our belief as to how we might be able to help Ashland, the Ashland Downtown District be revitalized within the scope and breadth of the bylaw that you carefully adopted for your town. Again, I, I don't want to take your time up. I'm, I apologize if, if anybody's having, I'm having internet connections tonight. I'm working remotely. But I, I intend to sit here and take very good notes. I recognize that we'll be back before this board on multiple occasions with multiple nights where we'll probably spend specific nights on, on, on a topic or two, traffic, et cetera. And we'll have our team ready for those nights at the direction of the Chair and the rest of the board. And again, I welcome the opportunity to be part of the project. Again, very exciting for me as a land use lawyer to be involved in a project where there'll be rehabilitation of existing historic structures and perhaps a reuse and a statement of how to create the history moving forward in the town of Ashland. So with that, I'm going to stop and I'm going to let Scott Richardson, who has spent an inordinate amount of time preparing plans, kind of give you a pictorial version of what we're going to do. And then, Madam Chair, I'll defer to you as how you would like to set up the rest of the meetings as we move forward. And again, all I will do tonight is try and take very good notes so that there are specific questions that can be answered in the interim between the meetings. We'll do our best to get back to you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Joe and Rich. And can I share my screen? Peter? Yep. When you get around to it, it can make me, okay. So thank you. I'm Scott Richardson, Principal and co-founder of Gorman Richardson Newus Architects. And interestingly, for about the first 20 years of our business, when we started in 1976, we actually were located in 30 Main Street and then subsequently moved to Hopton. So we're basically have an overview tonight, really, and we know this is a kind of a brief introduction to the project. Just be going through kind of the general building design and site design concepts. And then Craig Seymour will finalize or end with the financial impacts. We understand that there's detailed site development and stormwater would be subsequent to this. Environmental concerns would be subsequent to this meeting, traffic study and landscaping and lighting. We anticipate those will be in future meetings. So we're, everybody is very familiar with the, with the project site and the existing buildings are on the site, some of which have been there for over 150 years. The Southern Building, Building 50 was, I believe, built in the 60s. Brick structure, the other buildings, as we all know, are granite. And I think George would just have you kind of give an overview of the site conditions and the, what we're proposing that we're not, we're basically replicating new structures and site, site issues. So George, you have a minute?
Okay. This is really a pretty simple site from a civil perspective. I'd first like to talk about the revitalization plan as it was proposed by BSC. We have observed that particular layout for curb cuts and entrances. The only difference is the poor entrance and exit now on the south side of the property at Main Street along by the tail race, which is very, very steep and provides very poor queuing and getting into the queue traffic at the light is going to be replaced and it's going to be a one-way in. We are going to take down a building and have a new access egress, the principal one at the traffic signal. And we'll have a fourth leg on that traffic signal to accommodate that traffic. The two other entrances along Main Street, which were designed a little bit differently on the revitalization plan than, than the site has. And it took out a bit of traffic. We're observing that. So those traffic and curb controls remain as the revitalization plan has been proposed. We then go to the Myrtle Street exit and entrance. Again, that's a fairly steep one coming up onto Myrtle Street. And it has a poor site distance around the corner to the south, and that's going to be corrected with removal and relocation of some poles, regrading that ramp up to the Myrtle Street so that it approaches at a reasonable grade and has queuing abilities at that location. Overall, the traffic controls are probably most best understood is that probably between two and three vehicles entering and exiting during the peak hour from this particular site, where existing is about one. There is a lot of use in the old building. The existing accesses and egresses are poorly designed and they will be replaced. The light at Pleasant Street has a level of service B protected by BSC to twenty twenty-seven. And it has quite a bit of capacity for that fourth leg. We intend to work with BSC and make a pro-rata contribution to them timing the lights all through the downtown area. That has been discussed from the very beginning. So with respect to traffic and access to the street, I think we've met all the requirements and goals of the master plan or the revitalization plan. With respect to the hydrology, can we go back to the first picture you had, Scott? Yeah, if you look at that building, that particular footprint of paving and roofs is basically a totally impervious area of about five or so acres. That's not changing. So we don't have a pre and post-development analysis. What we do have is a low basin. There's a little bit of the front of the building that trains out onto Main Street. And that design, when they changed the curbs and parking, the BSC plan that accommodated the catch basins in front of that. So our focus is really on the back of the site where it's fresh and it's a bowl. But its blue line along the back is basically a berm, a concrete barrier that holds water back from the river. It extends along the south side up where the tail race was, if you follow that from this first slide just before this, where that salt entrance is. So that whole back area floods during the hundred-year storm and it is a collection system. If you look at Scott's arrow there, just above that is a little pump station, pump hose. That's been there forever. It's got a new concrete foundation probably in the last twenty years, but it used to stand on metal structure. And there's a pump in there and there's a sluice that comes out of the back, almost like a gold miner's sluice, and it dumps water onto the riverbank and simply evacuates water in that whole system. The two years, fourteen CFS, the ten years, twenty-eight CFS, and a hundred years, thirty-seven CFS, which is quite a bit of water to pump out of there. So that pumping system is going to be changed and updated so that it handles various storms with various pumps. And we're going to have a whole new drainage system that's been designed in the back with catch basins to do our TSS, little suspended solids removal. There is no water that comes in from the river onto the site. There was a mill race that went through from the river and through the buildings to run the equipment and it dumps out at the southern end of the property. That now that it's been blocked is really a bit of a stagnant body of water. We're planning on evacuating the water via the pump system out to that to give it some movement and remove the stagnation. I think mimics the existing or the pre-existing conditions when the mill race was there. If you look at it now, it's really poorly colored in mess that really should be moved and made a little bit better. There's some drainage that comes in from the town system. But basically, this is a bowl and we're going to pump it out just as it was pumped out before with a more modern system. And it's going to have a fairly extensive and high-power generator in case we lose power. I think that's about as much as I should say for tonight.
Thanks, George. And the whole site development, stormwater management, and environmental issues will be addressed at future meetings. So everybody's very familiar with the project, with the project site. A little bit of history here that I think I don't need to read through. One thing I did want to talk about a little bit, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but basically, we did have three town boards and staff review meetings. And then we had three public forums where we received significant staff and resident input, which has helped to shape the design of the project and reflects the long, a long-range vision for downtown Ashland. The two northern and most iconic historic buildings will be renovated in place and will maintain the current historic characteristics that they have. The rhythm of the original building massing has been maintained, enhanced with the new buildings. If people are familiar with the zoning, we do have almost eight acres here. The ADD zoning allows an FAR two-point-oh, which would actually enable a development of close to seven hundred thousand square feet. We basically are proposing a total of two hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred square feet, which includes the enclosed lower-level parking areas which are below the building. So we have an FAR of less than one. And as people have heard, we are proposing two hundred housing units and about thirty thousand square feet of commercial space. Twenty-five percent of the units will be affordable. The breakout right now is estimated at sixteen studios, hundred fifty-three one-bedroom units and thirty-one two-bedroom units. So the total building area devoted to apartments is two hundred twenty-six thousand, including the commercial space of thirty thousand, and then the covered parking is sixty-six thousand square feet. For a total of almost three hundred thousand square feet. Basically, a review of the lower level. As George mentioned, we have this one way down into our lower-level parking from the southern end of the Main Street entrance. And we can go circulate around the whole building and it's been demonstrated that fire trucks can enter and negotiate around the whole building with adequate turning radiuses. This is the platform above, so that this is the parking between the two buildings above. And this is the ramp that would go up to that. So there is parking between the buildings as well as below the buildings with elevator and stair access to the upper floors. Right now, we went a little bit back and forth on Building Ten. And we are looking at, because it's very accessible and has walkout areas at grade at the lower level, we're anticipating that that lower level could work very nicely for commercial space. So that's what we're proposing there. The main level, all along Main Street, we have retail, commercial, office, or whatever tenants will ultimately come in here all along the building modules. And then some good input we received at the last public forum was our original intent was to have all the buildings line up in line with the historic line of the buildings. But we realized that the way the road angles a little bit and the way the buildings weren't actually quite parallel to Main Street, we got some feedback to basically move this building back. And so what we did was we created an additional about thirty feet of patio area here in front of Building Fifty. So we have outdoor patio area, which could be conducive to dining area, with a restaurant in here. And we have a little dogleg on the building here to maintain our square footage. And this building does sit back further from the street to give that little bit of relief that we'll look at. This is the town and community room that Rich was talking about, which would obviously be utilized by the tenants of the building as they need a meeting and also would be available for the community at large. Each apartment complex has a main entrance off of Main Street as you come in. And then obviously has access to the lower-level parking areas via elevator and stairs. Upper level, and again, there is, there's apartments to the rear of twenty, thirty, and forty. Basically behind the front commercial space. Second floor is all apartment units, various configurations on each floor. And up on the third floor, we have just apartments on thirty, forty, and fifty. The first two buildings, as everybody is aware, are only two stories tall. So they basically just have a roof area there. As we come up Myrtle Street, we're looking at it's developing a branding iconic element here, announcing the project as you come around. And up onto Main Street, the, again, the first two buildings are going to be renovated and restored to maintain that historic appearance. There are, as part of the demolition plans that were submitted, there are several outbuildings and appendages to the buildings that will be removed so that you have a clean appearance of, and you get a better feel for the original architecture of these buildings without the various additions to the side and to the rear. The new buildings, thirty and forty, are here. Retail, commercial, rental units on the first floor. And the connector between the two buildings is pushed back a little bit to give some relief. Fifty, as we come up, this is the space between forty and fifty, which will be controlled by a signalized, the signal, traffic signal here. And we have first-floor parking here for accessing stores. And then, as I mentioned, we did pull Building Fifty back about another twenty feet, so you have a thirty-foot patio area here, which helps to break up this facade on the east, on the south side, as well as gives you the potential dining area right on Main Street. In the previous schemes, it was actually along the side of the building. And then this is the entrance to the lower-level parking area. As you come down the park drive from Main Street, you're going to be going around the building. Couple of views to the rear of these buildings. Trying to pick up on the mill building window systems that you have in the existing granite buildings. And as we mentioned, we have this riverwalk that basically is adjacent to that concrete retaining wall that goes along the whole back of the property. We're looking at elevating a walkway that then will have some visibility and views down to the river, as well as create an amenity to connect that south end of the site all the way back around the buildings and connect with the park, the Mill Pond Park at the the north end of the site. There's additional elevation drawings that were a part of the package and I don't need to dwell too much on those. But again, we're renovating and restoring the ten and twenty Main Street buildings. For those of you who are familiar, there's a very pretty ugly addition that was built onto ten that we're removing. There's also some outbuildings that are just one-story storage buildings, which are in very bad condition that we are removing as well. That's a brief overview of the architecture and the concept of the building and the site. Again, just a brief overview and then have Craig talk about the financial aspects of the project.
Great. Thank you, Scott. That was a good overview of the, of the new project. My role here is to talk about what the fiscal impacts are on the town of Ashland. And we'll start with the real estate taxes. The current seven-acre parcel today, as you know, is basically an older industrial site with functionally obsolete space for most of it. That's currently assessed about one point seven million dollars. Most of that value is in the land. The buildings themselves are only assessed at about eight dollars per square foot, which is very, very low. And altogether, it currently pays about twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in property taxes. The new project, as we're proposing here, with the apartments and the commercial space, is going to be assessed at somewhere north of sixty million dollars. And will generate close to a million dollars, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in annual property taxes. As you can see, that's a large increase over what it currently pays. We've also estimated what the impacts to the town of Ashland are going to be. And these are going to be not only the number of the population that's coming, excuse me a second there, but also the number of children coming into the school system. The two hundred units we estimate are going to generate about three hundred and eleven residents in between sixteen and school, sixteen and twenty school-aged children. Now, the fiscal impact analysis that we've undertaken for this is a kind of a modification of the existing template, fiscal impact template that the town utilizes. And it's actually a much more conservative view than that, what that takes. And we've estimated the high end of twenty school, twenty schoolchildren in the system is going to be about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year in terms of what the cost is going to be. Next slide, Scott. And this is just a summary, and there's a report that goes behind this, which will be discussed, I'm sure, at subsequent meetings, but total municipal costs to the town and includes general government, public works and DPW and so on, the others, is about three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year and a school cost for a hundred and eighty-four, for about a half a million dollars in terms of annual cost to the town to, to support these uses. Offsetting that, of course, are the real estate taxes, the one-time or the annual excise taxes for the automobiles, it'll be there. And plus, there's going to be other revenues coming in from the residents and from visitors there, but that adds up to about a million dollars. So you can see the net positive impact to the town is about four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars on an annual basis. Next one, Scott. And there are other impacts, of course. One of the big ones is the one-time building permit fees and the water sewer hookup fees, which have been estimated based on the construction costs to be about one point seven million dollars. During construction, there's going to be as many as three hundred full-time equivalent positions in town, generating lots of revenue or income for them, but some of that income, too, is going to be spent locally. Once completed, the commercial space is going to support about sixty-six full-time equivalent jobs, paying three million dollars in annual wages. And though we can't say all of those wages, certainly not going to be spent in Ashland, some of it will, because many of those are going to be local residents. And there's a very strong opportunity, as we've talked about in the previous meetings that we've had, to retain some of the existing businesses that are there today and those jobs, moving them into new, more modern, more effective space for the activities that take place. And we've also talked about the idea, some of this commercial space could be developed as incubator or maker space to support nation industries and entrepreneurs who are getting started in town. Significantly, from a statewide perspective, there are indirect and induced impacts where the money that is spent locally at the site then gets respent as it circulates through the economy. That generates a lot of sales tax income, some of which comes back to the town, as well as other taxes and other revenues that are supported. Total, in summary, the consumer spending, too, from the new residents is going to be significant. We've estimated that to be about seven and a half million dollars, only a portion of which, of course, will be spent downtown, but these are residents who will be frequently, frequently seeing other downtown businesses going across the street and getting breakfast and those types of things. So I think it's going to, it's definitely going to be a boon to downtown Ashland to get more people on the street and more spending being done there. So that's our summary of that. I'll turn it back to you, Scott, for a summary.
Yeah, I think that's knowing we didn't have a lot of, a lot of time this evening, we just wanted to give a brief overview of the project, the site and the building and the economics and understanding that the latest reports for the environmental aspects and the stormwater management and so on are needing to be reviewed by, you know, third-party reviewers and we will be looking at the, you know, reviewing those at subsequent meetings. So that's, that's what we have.
Thank you. Peter, can you, before we go forward, can you give us just a summary of what other boards that this project will be going in front of?
Ah, yes, thank you so much. So right off the bat, this is for your site plan review. And it's in that downtown district. So this is going to go to design review. In addition, this will also have to go to the Conservation Commission. It is within the floodplain and it does require, I believe, a notice a notice of intent and a RDA, which would be a quest for determination. Additionally, this site is also located within the Plume, the Nyansa Plume. Additionally, this site is also located within the Plume, the Nynanza Plume. So obviously, the Board of Health is going to be contacted and should and will probably weigh in on that. Just to speak to the Plume, there are two monitoring wells, I believe, that are located on site and, and preparing this application to get all input. I have emailed the Department of DEP, Prime Environmental Protection and the EPA and the community liaisons to to, to, to really to, to, I would say, circulate the plan in the project and to try to ask them to weigh in and to better understand how the town of Ashland in its boards and committees can work with the DEP and EPA as, as, as we all review this project that's in front of us today. But those are typically, those are the boards that will be impacted the most by this application.
Great, thanks, Peter. And so now at this time, I think as we have done with the previous project tonight, this is the, this is just the introduction of this project, which is obviously going to undergo a long process, as big and as complex of a project as it is. So I think we're looking for those big picture items from the board. Look, now that we have an overview of the project that, that you're going to want to talk about in detail, where you see your concerns are, expectations you have with our relationship with the applicant and things we might request. Looking for kind of a big picture vision of how we go forward in, in looking at this project. So if anyone wants to be the first to jump in on thoughts on that.
I, I'd like to go, because I do have concern, I understand the board about the demolition delay does not have any rights related to that. It feels disrespectful to the historic commission, another board that spent time and, and disrespectful to, you know, the community rules about that. So I would like to hear what the applicant is planning on doing, on complying with that. I realize there can be parallel processes, just like it's going to Conservation Commission, et cetera. I have concerns that I, I want the public, I believe I'm correct about this, whatever has happened before with Town Hall, with Planning Board members, with community forums are not relevant. We are starting tonight. That's my understanding. So I think that should be made clear if I'm correct. And it doesn't mean that there can't be some references, but I, I, I think we're doing ourselves and the public service if that's not cleared up.
I'm sorry, Kate, because I think that might be a question not to the applicant, but to us. What did you? What did you mean? What, what do you think needs to be clarified there?
Um, there's been reference even in the presentation tonight about previous public forums and though I think we welcome when applicants do that, it is not part of the planning board process yet. And I hope it will be and, and we'll have a, a better process to communicate that. So thank them for doing that, but that is not relevant to planning board hearing and business. Anything that's happened up until tonight is not part of that process if I'm correct.
Yes, I think officially, Peter, you can weigh in. It's definitely not officially part of the process. I think they were just making reference to efforts to try to reach out to residents and involve others. But yes, you're right. It is, it does start from day one on, on planning board.
Yeah, and I can just, I confirm, I'll, I'll confirm that, that Tricia just said this starts tonight, the public hearing starts tonight. Nothing that was done in the past really, you know, comes into play. The six members in planning board are here and to hear this application and determine the outcome. And there's been no, you know, everything, you know, nothing, nothing that's happened in the past is, will ever and can determine what happens in the planning board. It starts tonight and it is the first meeting, public meeting. I hope that clarifies that situation.
Yeah, um, also, I, I did send in a written thing, but since this is, this site is kind of inextricably tied with the water and the river front too. I think that we should find out how that's going along with the process instead of trying to have that not integrated with that. And I guess along that lines, is, is the planning board, the applicant, Conservation Commission, or all of us doing like submitting for the MIPA review and, and those kind of things, or how is that going to be integrated into the process? And then I guess my, my just general sides is that I, I feel like it's doesn't fit Ashland, the size and scale of that, and it's missed opportunities to really missed opportunities about redevelopment. Redevelopment's exciting, there are a book with a lot of effort, but this doesn't meet the mark for Ashland.
So Peter, do you, can you answer the question about the MIPA review?
Ah, yeah, that will all come in time, you know, due time. I think the project starts tonight with the planning board. The planning board feels is necessary and in time, we can, we will create a list of questions and valid points. We can send it to, to the Design Review Committee. Regarding the MIPA review, all those elements will come. And, and I believe that will come after the start of the Conservation Commission. In two thousand and twenty, I believe, the applicant submitted an RAD to the applicant, to the Conservation Commission, which outlined the jurisdictional limits of the wetland that was approved. And then I believe coming behind the planning board application will be in, or I would say in tandem with the planning board application will be application for both a notice of intent and a request for determination with the Conservation Commission. All those elements will, will, will come. However, typically, the planning board is the first committee in the town to, to entertain an application of this, this size and scale. And so if the applicant would like to add anything regarding the MIPA review and the elements regarding the Conservation Commission application, please, please note those at this time.
But that, that MIPA review kind of, is that originate with the Conservation Commission? Do you know? I thought with the schools it did with Mendez.
Yeah, it goes with, through the conservation process, yep.
I don't believe we hit any of the MIPA thresholds. An existing site in respect to conservation, the Conservation Commission has recognized it's a historic mill reuse under the Wellness Protection Act.
Has that already been addressed, George?
Yes.
Will you share that opinion with us, with the planning board?
Yeah, we can give you a copy of the ORAD when we file the notice of intent. Probably interesting to understand, we don't have any impacts to the well and resources. And as you know, entire sites within the river zone, but again, it's a historic reuse.
I, I definitely would, would love to see that. If there's a, you know, a decision already from, from conservation folks on the Rivers Act, that would, I think, give us some context.
Okay, thanks, Kate, for your initial comments. Someone else want to jump in on initial?
Sure.
Yeah.
Marcel, you want to go first or second?
No, ladies first.
So, I mean, I, I think any complex project like this requires, you know, at least for me, I, I wanted to start with the very basics of what is the bylaw? What am I looking at? What are we looking at as a board? And what's the purpose of the district, the Ashland Downtown District, which is one of the key districts here? And what are our mandatory findings, right? And so, big picture, the things I'm thinking about as far as the the purpose of the district, the things that are jumping out at me as I think about the project, which is this incredible opportunity for partnership, right? At a very vital site in Ashland, a historical site that is vibrant to our community. So the things that are jumping out at me from the purpose of the bylaw is the, the walkability element relative to the density, the reduction of auto dependency and air pollution, honoring historical architecture, cultural offerings, rekindling intopreneurship, downtown cooperation. Those are the things I'm thinking about. All right, this is going to have to meet those that purpose of the district. Does it meet the purpose? How do we assure it meets the purpose? What I'm hearing is that there's been a, a lot of work to get, to get here, but we are restarting this discussion with the planning board. We're at the, the starting point. And for me, those are the elements I would love to hear more about, the walkability, auto dependency reduction. I was excited to hear the word shuttle to the MBTA. I'd like to hear more about that and the interconnection between this site and other parts of the community, not just the MBTA, but perhaps our green areas, Stone Park, Ashland State Park, our school system. Will these kids, you know, will they be bused? Will they have an opportunity to get to to the different public schools nearby? Those are the elements for me. And then the the economic development element is so important. I thought it was really interesting how the presentation started with the introduction of, I think, one of the folks involved in this team had an incubator space at the mill, right? And I thought that was a very ironic and perfect introduction, because I think for a lot of businesses that I've heard, I think there's a business in Framingham, a genetics-related business that, that is doing quite well, and they had an incubation space at the mill. And now they're a large company in Framingham. So many businesses come through this space as a starting point. And I, I definitely want to explore that. I want to explore what that means to the space, to the unique economic opportunity that has been here versus what we're going to replace it with and how that will work. And I was very excited to hear that there will be some discussion of incubation space here to honor some of that, some of that energy. So big picture, those are some of the elements that are jumping out at me that I have to start thinking about as far as whether this project fits the intent of the bylaw, right? Whether it's appropriate to grant a special permit. And then the other elements I looked at was the mandatory findings that we're going to have to make. Thinking about long-term, what do we need to do as a board? And, you know, we do need to make findings as far as any adverse effects from reports from town boards, agencies, consultants, public hearings that have been held. And I think we're going to have to think about what boards, organizations, agencies, consultants, public members that we need to reengage with, approach and, and get reports from on such a massive exciting project that's going to have an impact on a historical element of our town. And obviously, the, the impacts on, on town equipment and development and the cost. And I very much appreciate the slides of tax base, kind of the, the pluses and minuses, if you will, of the costs involved. And I think we're going to, as a board, we're going to have to make some independent findings and make sure that we're comfortable with what we're hearing and assure that it's, you know, I'd like to hear more about what's behind those findings, how those findings were made, the data behind it, so that we're comfortable with our mandatory findings. So those are some of the items I'm thinking about. And then specifics, just like prior project, Net Zero, I think is really important to discuss. I want to hear about hydropower or, or any kind of use of the water source. Public, the use of public space. I didn't really hear any discussion of whether how many of those acres, eight acres is the whole property. I, I would love to see this development have at least one acre of public space close to twenty percent. I'd love to see that be part of that walkable environment that reduces auto dependency. So I would say the biggest change I'd like to see is moving us more towards that element. And then the last piece I'll add is the public participation in this. As I understand public process, this particular hearing, the, the butters were notified. I think that this is going to be a very complex, important project and it would be helpful to hear if the applicant would be willing to assist us in giving notice to the public for future hearings, so that we continue to have a strong public participation of these hearings, rather than, than lose the public's interest if, if these hearings are going to go on for multiple months. And that, that summarizes my comments.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Anna. Marcelo?
Uh, thank you, Tricia. And I concur with some of what Anna has said. But I, I would like to look at the, at, at the big picture of this project, because I just tried to look at these with, with a fresh set of eyes. I agree with the, your introduction, Tricia. I think this project without a doubt, in my view, is really the most consequential project. I think this town is going to undertake probably in the next couple of decades for, for obvious reasons. There's no doubt that this is, this is the gateway to the town, to the downtown district, coming from Myrtle Street, right at the waterfall. And by default, is, is a project that, unlike in other similar projects adjacent to the River of Medicleer, that there's no more important resource to this town than that river. And I think, in my view, has been neglected for forever. And the project with these, with this location is, is a unique opportunity to really start transforming that around for the benefit of the entire town. So I think that's very important. The connection with the district is with the downtown district, obviously, critical. So in general, I am very, I'm hopeful and I'm very optimistic that with a good process, a good partnership, the, the, the potential for this site really can be realized. I, 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 just like Anna highlighted, I like the diversity of programmatic uses that, that's being contemplated here. What ratio each should be, that's something that we'll find out. But I think that, that, that is going to really make a, a vibrant piece of, of the community. But just to go back to the, to the site, what, what the, my, my optimism, not optimism notwithstanding, I, I, I think the, the site plan as proposed, just by looking at the documentation, to me, it, it, it's, it, it leaves a lot to, to be desired on, 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 on a couple of of points. And I'm going to keep it general, because we're going to get into the details as the process moves along. First of all, what I just said, the relationship with the river, I, I, I was interested, I mean, the, the, the civil engineer, gentleman that, that spoke earlier, made a point with the picture showing how this project is pretty much entirely impervious, based on the obvious nature of the industrial uses before, and that's not going to change. Well, that's exactly the problem that, that I start with, that it's not going to change. I think adjacent to a river, there, there is a unique opportunity to really create a, a, a true green belt around this project. That could be a fantastic opportunity for walking and for enhancing the river, but also to give the river back to everybody. And I don't, I don't see that. I, I don't see even the, the beginnings of, of an effort like that on the site plan as it stands today. The river walk, we saw it in the rendering. I mean, a paved sidewalk with railings on both sides is really not a river walk, in my view. I think there's a lot of opportunities there that could be taken advantage of, and not just a narrow, little median adjacent to, 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 to a street moving around the side. The, the side, that now that's kind of the, the river portion of it. In terms of the, of this, of this side, and I see the, the, the intent of following a rhythm of what the old buildings were, I recognize that the historic nature of the project has had a lot of mutations over the last hundred and fifty years. And then this one is going to be yet another one. But I do, I do recognize that the, the buildings that are there, especially the granite buildings that are the most reminiscent of the old use should be celebrated and should be an important part of the project. I, I don't see it in the site plan. I see, just it becomes like a repetitive series of figures that go really deep and what, I, I wonder what would make this project successful. And I think the connection with, with the back of the site is just lost, right? If you walk through, you're in a corner, in the corner spot, or you walk through the street, there, there's an opportunity there to really celebrate those initial buildings. They're all different. One is a little higher than the others. And, and that variation is something that could enhance the project. After that, what's being proposed is like a, a, a seascape of two-story bars that extend kind of for forever with a typology that I, I really don't recognize as something that would really enhance, enhance the, the, the streetscape. I, I think there's a lot that, that can be developed there. But the idea that in between these bars is going to be these, just this, these holes down to the lower level. And the only connection there is a couple of, like garage ramps going straight down down there. It's it's kind of troubling to me. There's the the the, I think there could be a better effort to slowly grade the site and adjust the buildings so that they become part of the site and not just flop right on top of it. And maybe there's there's other variations where the old this, the the old buildings can become its own celebrated little district within this project, and the new buildings are something different. They don't have to mimic a lot of things. I I know that people love these buildings and we all do. Uh, we don't have to repeat or copy anything of the old buildings. That's a different typology of the past. So I I think the project can be a little more creative about that. So I I think there's a lot of material here and and a lot of possibilities. Uh, but but uh, I think there's a lot of work to do from the side point of view and the and and the architecture and how it relates to the old buildings. Um, so overall, that's those those are some highlights of what I'm thinking.
Thanks, Marcelo. Uh, Kevin Deepa, someone to jump in? Deepa?
Uh, I think I would second everything Marcelo just said. I think those were exactly the same things that seem to have caught my attention, having seen this project go through various design. Um, it's definitely coming along from where what I remember seeing a year ago, definitely there, but those critical points that Marcelo mentioned were the same things that I think caught my attention, and that's where I'm stuck and hoping that as we go forward, those will get evolved evolve as it's a design process, so hopefully we'll get to kind of pulling in those key features that the site has around three sixty degrees typically, so.
Thanks, Deepa. Kevin?
Yeah, I think I agree with a lot of the um, architectural points that that were made there and um, I'd like to hear more about why the the third building can be saved or what plan is to reuse the granite. I know it said that that grant will be reused throughout the site, so you know, where and how, I I know that that can be done. Um, well and effectively, uh, you you know, you can shave it and make it facade of another building, or you can use it for pavers, other places and things like that. So I'd like to see the details of of where that is and where the the nods to the history of that building are going to go if it needs to be demolished. Um, and then other things, I think, just the uh, the environmental impact, not not only in the final configuration, but of the construction so close to the river. Um, that looks like, you know, everything you do will be within the hundred-foot buffer of that river, so that's obviously a concern. Um, just being very careful with 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 everything that goes on during construction. Um, and then impact to utilities to be considered along with all the financial impact that we saw, um, just what additional, you know, sewer and water usage, this this building would have, and interested to see all that as we as we move ahead and um, hopefully it will fit into the utilities under what will be a newly paved road right in front of there before this construction gets going. Um, and then you you'll obviously the cost and stuff of that, which I I think we'll see more of what was behind those sides. Um, it gets to the math of all that. And um, finally, just to to look more at the effect on the existing businesses that are in there. I I don't know a ton about it, but I I I think that's a big thing that we've heard from the public so far, that there are a lot of businesses that will need to leave and hopefully some will be able to make it back, but um, what happens to them in the meantime? And, you know, how does the final configuration compare to the amount of space that's there for business now? And how does that affect the revitalization of this neighborhood that we're looking for?
Great. Thanks, Kevin. Um, yeah, I think I just have a a couple of things to add. I think this is a really um, a really good list that that we started here about this project, and it's going to grow and get more complex, obviously, just just like the project. Um, so just a few notes of things that I wanted to really just three at this point. One is um, thinking about the traffic because I know this is um, again, a concern of the public. It's always a concern of the planning board. Um, and I could be wrong about this, but I believe that the traffic report that is was submitted apart as part of the documentations, I believe was done in early twenty twenty. Is is that correct? And and so obviously, I believe it was
No, it's not correct. It was the traffic council done in two thousand seventeen. Traffic report was issued um, initially in two thousand twenty and edited through twenty-two.
Okay, so the studies were done in in twenty seventeen?
And I'd uh, note that that kind of uh, mimics the traffic council BSC head for the revitalization um, project.
Okay. So I just think that'll, I mean, that'll, um, I'm glad it wasn't done in twenty twenty for obvious reasons. Um, but I think the reports on traffic obviously will um, will come back, you know, to us, that obviously it's it's critical, especially with the all the other development happening in Ashland, that that's something that we'll be looking at. Um, and I encourage the applicant to be on on top of that at all times. Um, the second thing is, and it kind of goes um, to what has been I know all of the, we're we're going to get into detail about water, sewer, traffic, um, the Conservation Commission, um, the bylaws, e- everything, um, obviously that has been mentioned so far. But I think a lot of the a lot of that plus the design of the buildings overall, um, when we get there hinges um, a lot on the relationship um, between the planning board and the applicant team and just how willing the developer, the owner, um, the architect, um, everyone involved in the applicant's team are to um, are to work with the board, how willingness they are to take another look at some of the designed assumptions they may have had on the boards for a long time now. Um, and so I think the willingness to take a a second look and a third look in order to address this um, site, which everyone has stated is such a such incredible importance to Ashland, is going to be critical to um, the possible success of this project. I think if there's not a willingness there to re-question what has already been done almost almost from the beginning to take another look at it, then it's going to be a very difficult process indeed. Um, so I hope that um, I hope that that back and forth um, is something that we can develop over these many uh, the series of many meetings to come and that we can develop it sooner rather than later so that we can officially use our time together. Um, uh, Peter had suggested, and I I think it's an excellent idea that um, we organize a site walk for the board um, and to really go and understand that most of us have been on this property for some reason or other, whether going into a business or a a site block that the planning board took sometime during COVID. I can't remember when. We were walking around downtown in general. Um, but I think to really understand this project from the ground. So I assume all all members of the board are are wanting to do that. And I would ask Peter that we try to organize something between now and well in advance of whenever the next meeting um, is so that we really look at this project very closely from the ground in the very early stages of the project so that we have that, we all have that in our minds as as we talk about it.
If I could, I was gonna add to that, but I think I I think doing a mill project-related retreat early on might also help us as a board because I know some of our members were involved earlier. Others are more new, and we all bring a lot of interesting experience. I was really fascinated to hear Marcelo's words, celebrating the buildings. That kind of stuck out to me. And I wonder if a retreat, Tricia, focused on this particular project early on might help us as a board also um, to kind of unite in our vision and and really understand the planning element here as to how we, you know, what our purpose is. Um, it's a complicated bylaw, multiple kind of overlay districts involved. Um, and I'm just kind of throwing that out there. Maybe we can group it with the site walk?
Yeah, I guess I would need to talk about that with Peter now that the public hearing has opened. Um, that I'm I'm not familiar. I don't think we've done that before, and so I'm unfamiliar if if that kind of thing can
Just an idea. I mean,
Yeah, I understand. I understand what you're saying. Um, but Peter, you and I can have a, to understand better what can and can't happen now that the public hearing has opened.
Yeah, the one thing I will always say is is whatever we do and and all planning board meetings will come to the public. And so if we wanted to meet in person tonight
Yeah.
to focus in on this project, obviously, the public is welcome and the applicants is obviously, we would invite them and it'd be more of a, it'd be a in-person meeting, I would say. Um, obviously, a- a- as we carry on our work online via Zoom at this point, so. But I can reach out, I'll talk to Tricia in in later, but I understand that I think uh, getting the site visit scheduled is is probably is is one thing. And then I agree, and I, you know, I understand what you're saying is to have a more of intense, compact uh, in-person meeting concerning this project.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, I'm not an architect. I think we have a very tech. We have some expertise on the board. Like, I would be very curious to pick Marcelo's brain as to what he means by celebrating the buildings and what he's envisioning. That would help me as a board member to do that in person. So, you know, how do we do that with a site walk, but be able to talk through those details technically? We can't really do that here. Right? We have to be there. So I kind of want to make that happen, um, if that's possible. That that's kind of my immediate reaction. I would benefit from that, and I think the public would as well.
I I can understand where you're coming from with with that, too. The these online meetings do make that kind of transfer of information and design thought process a little tricky.
Yeah, to point to the buildings. Yeah.
Let us, let us kind of think through that and and how that might happen. Um, okay, so at this point, um, I do want to open up, open it up to public comment. Um, given that there's to my great surprise and actually disappointment, there's a very limited number of people on the meeting tonight. I'm not sure why, and I hope that changes in the future. Um, but I will open it up to um, public comment and um, as there are a limited amount of people, I won't put a strict timeline on it tonight, but I do ask you to be respectful with your time and your number of questions or comments because this is the very first meeting and there'll be many other opportunities. So with that, I will hand it over to Peter to open up public comment.
All right, I'm just gonna run down the line of 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 people and and how it came up on my Zoom. So uh, Mr. Chris Gazzard, could you please uh, introduce yourself and uh, uh, state your name and your address uh, for record?
Thanks, Pete. Chris Gazzard, twenty-one Park Road, Ashland, Mass. Um, I I I I will keep it brief. To me, the uh, probably, you know, they're all very important, but the historic aspect of it, um, not to be, you know, a stickler, but it, those properties are over two hundred years old, not a hundred. And I know it's just, but it they're critical to Ashland. A lot of uh, big things have happened in those buildings. So I agree with the board. The historic aspect has to be, I I think we keep all three buildings, again, using them for their unique uh, attributes. The brick one is what it is, nineteen sixties. I'm fine with that being its removal. Uh, then the kids, I go up to serious, I walk serious apartments. I see there's there's more than sixteen kids up there. I I guess I want to tie into that, like, uh, you know, there's no open space. You're tearing down buildings and then no open space to be added. So that's a little concerning to me as well. Uh, recently, we had Framingham State now charging residents two hundred and fifty dollars to use the open space that Henry Warren left for us. So the lack of open space, the lack of use, you know, using the the waterfront, the Subway River, it it just, I I I I, again, I echo Marcelo's statements about really making that a a special spot for the community and everyone. And then lastly, two hundred apartments, you know, the owner, Rich, had mentioned at the beginning that uh, economic development person, Beth Reynolds and Mike Herbert approached him to begin this project. So I want to know how an econ- econom- economic development person turns into two hundred apartments where, you know, this is filled with businesses, vital businesses that have been a part of our fabric in Ashland for many years. And to go to two hundred apartments, it just seems, I I don't know how that leaked. I don't know where that number came from. Um, I'm just curious to find out more about that because I I I just, as a resident downtown, two hundred apartments just seems way, way, way too much. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gazzard. Uh, I'm just gonna c- continue on. Uh, next up is uh, Ms. Helen Nicole. Uh, please uh, introduce yourself to the board and state your name and address.
Hi, yes, Helen Nicole, uh, for Elliot Circle. Um, I I I wanted to actually say a number of things, and I'm I'm gonna stick to kind of um, not expressing all of my concerns tonight because I know there's going to be a lot more uh, time to do that, but I am encouraged, and I really wanted to say that I am encouraged that the planning board is expressing many of the concerns that I myself have and that I know people in the public um, also have. And also, and I do think Rich Gordon, because he does listen to the public. However, with that being said, I'm still very disappointed and I don't understand why this planning process is allowed. You, we're totally negating the reason for even having a demolition delay bylaw if we're going to allow the planning process to go ahead until that's run out. Um, so it it just, it 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 really does, um, you know, just it boggles my mind that this this process does this. I'm I'm concerned about why do we have a a bylaw that's being ignored? So I I I did want to say that. Also, I wanted to express um, some confusion. There's been some confusion online, so I was glad that uh, the planning board did express tonight that this is the first public hearing uh, because there was a little bit of confusion around that and that the process is starting now. And um, you know, and I know, um, I know I have a lot more concerns, uh, but I really did want to kind of um, you know, express those because I think it's really important. I think that I think that the board should all respect each other and the bylaws. And I'm glad that you're all expressing the very important concerns that I know we all have. But I think that that needed to be said, and uh, that's really all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I'm sorry, I'm searching for my microphone. Uh, next up, town manager, Michael Herbert.
Thanks, Pete, and thank you, everyone. Um, I I'll keep my comments very, very brief and uh, won't get into any specifics, but uh, first off, I want to say that I do uh, support the redevelopment of the site. Um, I've, I I think it has has been said by many people before tonight that uh, this has the possibility to be one of the most transformative projects in Ashland if done right. Um, and I'm very excited about that prospect. Um, I just wanted to address some of the concerns about my involvement and some of my staff's involvement. Um, while we're supportive of the redevelopment of the site and uh, we are also appreciative of the efforts that Rich and his team have made to both reduce the unit count and increase the commercial space and address some of the other concerns that have been uh, noted uh, in expressed by myself and others, including the, you know, saving at least two of the historical buildings. I don't want that to be construed as a wholesale endorsement of the plans as presented. Um, I have a number of concerns with them, um, and I've expressed those to to Rich and I think to the public have have, they have heard me about the design, um, and some of my thoughts about that. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Um, but I've been actually very encouraged to hear uh, the planning board members, their thoughts and their ideas, what they think is important, what they think uh, can be improved moving forward. And uh, I even agreed with a couple of Chris Gazzard's comments, so I I think that's uh, that's pretty interesting. It's nice to hear that a lot of people, I think, are on the same page. So again, supportive of um, of the redevelopment of the site, appreciative of what Rich and his team have done so far, but am looking forward to how this planning board shapes this project moving forward.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up, uh, Mr. Mark DeSoni. Mark, can you please uh, unmute yourself and introduce us? Uh, introduce yourself with your name and your address for the record.
Hey, my name is Mark DeSoni, forty-nine Hawthorne Road. Have been following this for a little while and understanding that it's downtown and this town needs an economic boost, and this is a good start. What I like, what Mr. Gordon was saying about the uh, the thirty thousand square feet of the commercial is the idea of understanding that money and business can stay home and to make it actually grow into a a a spot to come to, live in and work at. This is a good start for the for this project. So I'm I'm going with the positives. And I I kind of un- understand what the demolition derby, but the night, the whatever the sign of demolition derby is. But historically, the historic, it's history, historical society is having problems a little bit of that demolition derby itself. of that demolition derby itself, but they're being, they're being, understanding and waiting, being patient on what goes on in front of them. But I myself see this as a good start for downtown development and then understanding that what Mr. Gordon and his team is doing is trying to help Ashland have a future and not just be a four ninety-five Route Nine bypass to skip by when they can just, in the future, come in and stop and work out. So I'm, I'm positive for this. I'm working at this and I know that the town manager and Beth, and Beth Reynolds both know how I feel about economic growth. And I'm just gonna go with just go on, get it going and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, next up, uh Joan God, uh Godfrey. Uh Joan, can you please unmute yourself and uh introduce yourself uh to the planning board and to the record?
Yes, um, Joan Confrady, One Shore Road, uh Ashland, Mass. And um I echoed um a lot of the concerns that have just been um been iterated. Um, I'm, am, again, am very appreciative of the fact that the planning board seems to have a lot of the same concerns that um that I have. Um, I have sent my concerns to the planning board, so I don't want to spend a lot of time um going through all of those. Um, as you said, they'll come up, I, I'm sure as time goes on, there'll be more chance to do that. But I do have um a one major concern and that is that the um, that the project is allowed to go forward. And I, I understand maybe that there's nothing that can be done, but I think in the future that should be changed, that um, that it should have to wait for the demolition delay to be resolved. Um, otherwise, why do we have it? And I would like the board to, uh to um ask the developer what they're doing to pull in people and try to get some response from people to use that building. Um, I'm, I would really like to keep um the third building. Um, I think there's, I'm sure there's a way to do that. I am very concerned about water in the town. I think we have got a huge problem with water and we're adding about thousand uh apartments um coming up within the last few years and coming up, coming forward. And that's going to be a big concern. I think that the developers should have to help um, help with that. Um, but I also, one of the big concerns is that we're, nobody has mentioned, we're losing, we could talk about the commercial space, thirty thousand square feet is nice, but we're losing a hundred and ten thousand square feet of commercial space. And that is, um, that to me is, is just untenable. Um, I think that was, there's way too much residential, uh two hundred apartments is way too much for that, for that location. And I think it's going to change the, the, the site as, as proposed right now is going to change the character of the town forever. Those are my major thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, as we continue on, uh Ms. Kathy Rooney, Kathy, can you please step forward uh and unmute yourself and introduce yourself uh with your name and your address?
Catherine Rooney, uh one thirty-six Fountain Street. Um, so uh I'm glad that we're gonna have a lot of opportunities to talk about this building in town. In the future, I'm gonna start by echoing what Chris Gazzard, Helen Nicole and Joan on Friday have said. And then the economics of this has been concerning me from the start. The fact that we're gaining thirty thousand of commercials space, but losing a hundred and ten doesn't, doesn't even make sense to me. Um, we're barely breaking even on the costs to the community. Um, just at the start, and then we're dependent on potentially people spending money there. Those people that might move in or maybe gonna spend money. In the meantime, the costs that we're hearing about are the twenty twenty-two costs, and this project's gonna be in the town for decades. Um, I think this is a significant gateway project, as um Marcelo said. That it's a potential to transform our relationship to the river. Um, this is a potential to be a real green belt for us to really celebrate um the net zero initiative. And I, I don't see it right now. Um, and I'm hoping that um, we can we can significantly revise this project so it reflects some of those goals of the town. And last but not least, I can't believe we're actually considering these buildings when potentially in the middle of this planning process, some of those buildings could start getting demolished. That just sounds incredibly disrespectful to the townspeople and to the history these buildings represent in the town. And I'm hoping that the developer hears that and will agree publicly to wait until the entirety of these processes are finished before they start demolishing buildings. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. As we continue on, uh, I have the next person up and excuse me. It is B in Beauty by Elizabeth, Elizabeth. There you go. Thank you so much. Uh, please introduce yourself with your name and address.
Can you guys listen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so uh, good night for everybody. Uh, especially to Rich as well. Uh, I mean, I think I'm the one, the, the only here as a tenant on this meeting tonight. I'm not quite mature, but I'm owner on the B and Beauty Salon and Spa on the thirty Main Street. Um, as Rich know about and everybody. My place is so beautiful. I love to, you know, uh, stay on the main street forever. So I really want uh you guys thinking uh on the business, on the tenants over there. I hope they can help us very much because it's very, you know, difficult to lose our spaces over there. Uh, it's a good neighbor, a good people over there working. Um, I like to be in town future because I try, you know, um, I don't like, I, I, I'm not live as a residential in Ashland, but I like to move to Ashland. I live a little far from the business right now. And I like to, you know, filter to move to Ashland, but I like to keep my business uh in Ashland. So I just um like to have opportunity to stay uh and coming back to the, after the project done, or I don't know how this is gonna be. So it's just like my concern is about uh my business and whatever who like to stay um after. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments and thank you as a, as a tenant uh within the buildings for, for, for coming here tonight, expressing your feelings. Um, we have one person uh left with their hand up and it is uh Tomas.
Kaszmalski.
Yes, um, thank you so much. Can you please unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record?
Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, loud and clear.
All right, okay. My name is Tomas Kaszmalski and I live at one Robert Gonfada, which is located right across the river from the, from the site we are discussing here today. So as you can imagine, um, well, I support redevelopment of that area. What is there now is uh not particularly pleasant. Uh, I am however a little concerned with the number of units that are planned. And I, I am planning to attend these meetings to find out if uh any consideration has paid uh towards the impact that this development will have on the community that is right across the river. Marquette Street, uh Giuliani Gonfada. Um, especially in terms of noise and illumination. Um, I don't have any uh any detailed comments at this moment. I just wanted to indicate that this may be a concern to some people.
Okay, thank you so much for your concerns. I think um we understand uh that you, isn't a butter, you have concerns with the number of units. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, before I hand it back over to, to the, to the planning board, uh Joan, Good Friday, Good Friday, you have your hand up again. Uh, do, would you like to add one more quick comment?
Yes, um, I just want to add um that I do like the look. I wanted to be a little more positive, I think, than, than what I sounded. I wanted to add that I do like the look of the two buildings and um and I think that they, that, that they will add to the um middle area. And I also wanted to mention that there was a middle building project survey and Peter, maybe you can forward that on to um to Scott um if you wouldn't mind. And um I think that, that they need to understand that between um seventy-five and ninety-two percent of the respondents to that survey have major concerns about the project that would be really helpful if they could see them and, and understand their comments. So, thank you very much.
I, I see Hannah Stein's hand went up, so I'll take Hannah Stein's comment, but then we'll, we'll cut it off there instead of people kind of jumping in line at the last minute. So Hannah, you're the last.
Thank you so much, Tricia. Um, Hannah Stein, six Coburn Drive in Ashland. I just wanted to say, um, I actually own a business on Front Street in Ashland. Um, the construction, uh while we all know all these construction projects have to happen, has literally decimated my business this summer. I'm struggling to stay alive. And I would just like to suggest that before thirty thousand square feet of new retail or business space is added and before um these other projects are completed, that perhaps some consideration might be um spent on those who are trying to stay in business in Ashland, those who are going to be displaced by this project and also perhaps welcomed back. But what happens in the interim? Uh, as small business owners, this is not a small consideration. You know, we don't have millions of dollars to write off on our taxes. So I am just concerned about the well-being of Ashland's business community as it does involve many small businesses and how can we you know, look toward the future and at the same time support those who are presently doing business in Ashland to make it to the future. So, thank you. I appreciate being heard.
Thank you. All right, so um obviously we are going to be um continuing this meeting until September twenty-second. Would that be right, Peter?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, September twenty-second.
Okay, in the meantime, obviously, we're going to, we want to schedule a, a site walk. Um, Peter, I assume your office will send out a, a doodle poll. Um uh, it, it obviously will be a public meeting as well. Um, so I would ask um board members, as we try to find a time that works for all of us to try to be as it's hard, it's really, really hard to find a time that works for all of us to sort of try to be as flexible as you can as we schedule that meeting. And um, and I think as we look forward to that September twenty-second meeting, I encourage the planning board to jump in here on different considerations. My first inclination about the, the focus of that meeting would be to zero in on um one of the documents that I know Scott Richardson produced early in the process um about how this project is intending to respond to the surrounding neighborhood. That I think is kind of a big picture thing, which would be deserving to go over in detail. And I think on the kind of opposite side of that, it would be making sure we start to have any of the documentation and um information in place about the the not-so-pretty things about design, about sewer, about water, about other, uh, details about these other things uh in more detail that we need to talk about and understand better. Um, maybe the third item on that is to start to go through, as Anna had said, the um, the bylaws and the um and the uh criteria by which this project by our bylaws has to be judged. And so it would be important, I think, to have those out early in the discussion um to know what kind of things we're talking about and how we're supporting our arguments for or against the project based on what is in the bylaws. Um, so um thoughts from the board, those would be kind of my top three things. Look at the site. What we're relating to in the site, design-wise. Start to look at all the, the, I'll call the not pretty underlying things that we have to take care of and to look at the regulations, the bylaws that we're obligated to, to look at. Any?
I, I mean, I like where you're, I, I like everything you've said, Tricia. My, the one thing that you said earlier that really jumps out at me is we do need to hear, I think, from, from, from Rich Gordon as far as the openness to these discussions because I, I can say, you know, reading the bylaw, looking at where we are, we're, we're certainly not there yet, right? Um, at least in my opinion, like right now, I, I don't think the project meets the bylaw. That's me personally, one member. Can we get there? Yes. But I think we need to know from Rich that he's open to those conversations because you know, the planning board could, could show up. We've got this amazing experience on the board. We've got architects, designers. You know, folks from um, from um construction industry, like we, we're a good board. We can have a lot of vibrant discussion and and we can start brainstorming. You know, I'm sitting here figuring out kind of elements of, of other communities that have gone through this. I, I mean, there's so many communities. I used to live in Portland, Maine. Not far from Portland is a community called, called Bitterford. And Bitterford had a lot of these types of buildings and there's a massive redevelopment happening. We could learn a lot from those communities um as to what we could do as a board. But if Rich is not open to, to those ideas and those conversations, I feel like we need to kind of make sure our relationship is strong with Rich, with the project team so that all of this energy that we're gonna spend actually moves us sufficiently forward. That's kind of my concern. I want to make sure that whatever the board does, we include the applicant and the public in a vigorous fashion right off the bat um and really make sure there's commitment to make progress.
So, Rich, is that something you want to come on, on tonight, or do you want to have a chance to gather your thoughts? It's up to you. It's late.
Well, it, you know, it's gonna be a, a lot of continued dialogue, but uh first and foremost, um I absolutely want you all to know that we are here to work together. Um, from the start, you know, Michael, Peter, Beth and I and my whole team have been talking about a collaborative effort. And um, as you know, Trish, that's why we had discussion groups and we've had lots of meetings and we've been trying to move this forward very positively for over two years now, and it's changed a lot. Um, and it is one hundred percent my intent to work together with the board. And I, I like what you said earlier. I think a site visit is totally appropriate. I think that'd be great. We'd really welcome that. I, I think that goes a long way to physically just be out there and to see it and touch it and feel it and look at it and comment on it. Um, I would welcome that. And I think that's a great starting point. And you know, then we can continue from there. I mean, there's been a lot of great points made tonight. We are listening. Um, I want you to know that, like we have been from the start. And we want to move forward in a positive way. This is an important project. We want to do it right. You know, and, and we want to do it. So uh we are open to all of that. So thank you all for your comments and um the time that you gave us all tonight.
Good. Thank, thank you for those comments. All right, on, on that note, um I will uh make a motion to continue this public hearing, um assuming it is good with the applicant. We'll be continuing this public hearing um until September twenty-second.
September twenty-second.
Twenty, September twenty-second. And um in between that time, we will schedule a site visit, but on the continuance, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Eba, like a die.
Anna Testman, it's yeah, aye.
I'll say it on a aye.
Ask them, Jersey.
And Trisha Kendall, ayes. That is continued until September twenty-second. Um, Peter, do you need to formally ask for the continuance?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention to Richard or Joe, if I can get an email just requesting, you know, it, confirming that we're in agreement for a continuance, uh I would greatly appreciate it. Uh, and so therefore I can just stamp it in with the town clerk for a formal uh, for a formal continuance.
Peter, I'll, I'll try, it's Joe. I'll try and have an email off to you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
I'll make a note of myself now.
The clerk's office is closed anyway.
Great. Um, thanks to the applicant for the um presentation of the beginning of this project and we will see you again in September. Well, if not before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, one um point of procedure. Um, again, my mind is, my headspace is a little off these days. I don't believe I formally Um again, my mind is, my headspace is a little off these days. I don't believe I formally closed the meeting. For. The solar panels. Do we, do I need to do that? Do we need to formally close the?
You know what? I think the vote was the formal closure.
Okay.
Of it, you know, I think we took final action. We voted. Our attorney, Ken Affleck, was here. Uh their attorney was on the call. I think, you know, I think we can take that as final action.
Okay, it's hard to keep all the ducks in a row sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think we're a good standard.
Okay, so um. So we're going to, we just have a couple items on the on the remaining um. Topics on the agenda. There's just a couple things. That we need to go through. Um if anyone else has anything that really needs to be go going through tonight, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to just skip. Well, does anything have anything on the planning topics? There that they think needs to be discussed tonight in any detail? We don't have a lot of time, but. If there's anything, I would gladly entertain.
I would just like to mention to everybody, and I think we sent a link out that the MBTA final guidelines were published by the state. About a week ago, two weeks ago. Uh the state has has upped it, you know, I'm looking at their their scheduling, some training sessions. I'll send any all and any and all information out to the board members. Uh it sounds like, it looks like everything is gonna get going after Labor Day. Regarding seminars and training and uh and and therefore, but just want to make note that the the final guidelines did come out. Uh and uh we're just like everyone other, we're just trying to learn some more about what's what we what we need to do next.
I I assume Peter wants you and Emma have a handle on those. You can kind of report to us what what has changed or that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll be doing that.
Yeah, give you some time to get back on your feet after illness and and we'll we'll get back to that later.
Okay, thank you.
Um I have a quick thing. I think it's on the agenda about the sustainability. Is that?
Yeah, um into the next section, reports from planning board members and town planner, that we always have sustainability on the list, so.
Okay, I just, um the, on behalf of the Sustainability Committee, we received some comments and. I sent some comments back as a planning board member, not obviously the clerk. And then it's sort of just left procedurally, I think, um. Should we reach out to the sustainability to have a conversation about those or what? That was a specific sort of request.
Um were you, you were talking about the document that we just received?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it might be. More efficient, they are now also um working on that checklist, which which I see is, I see as a real checklist that you can hand. Both to us and to the developer saying. This is what we're looking for. How many of these can you meet, you know, kind of thing? So I think it might be best if we, more efficient if we can discuss the two of them together and wait, kind of wait for the second document. Um but but I think any feedback we want to give them in in between, I think is fine. You know, we're giving them things to consider. We can all do it individually. As we all read through it. Um and the Sustainability Committee will obviously be reading through what their own recommendations are. Not necessarily what the planning board wants them to say, so.
So I can respond just as not, again, the clerk, but that we had a conversation tonight and keep going and 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 then try to schedule maybe when the check. To get on our agenda and so.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I I think that's appropriate, right, Peter? We can respond individually. Um to basically asking for outside comment. It doesn't have anything to do with a project before the board.
So, yeah, you could, everyone could add, e- everyone can respond individually. There's no issues with that.
Are we think, are we thinking, Tricia, of at some point kind of reviewing these documents and kind of taking? A rule or a vote, I guess, as a board that we're gonna start using these, or what's what's our plan with the documents?
I'm I'm not sure, but I think um.
Or just using them as a guide?
I haven't like, like given it any thought, being not sure, but I feel like at some point when we have this description and the checklist. That as a board, we would certainly need to agree with the checklist and my assumption is that. There, the checklist will be filled with things that. Don't necessarily. Um that we would love to apply with every project, but maybe some don't apply to every project, or we feel differently about how they apply to every project. So the checklist is given to developer, but there's still discussion on, yes, we want every parking space to be. Um electric vehicle ready, or no, we don't all agree with that, right? That it's not a hardened, because I don't think we'll ever get to that point. But it it's something we give to the applicant to see how, how, how sweet can you make the pots, right? How how well can you do on this list? And then the rest will be for us as a board or future boards. To determine where the where the gray area is, where the line is, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, I can see that. I don't think we can like require all of these things, but I think that it's a great starting point. I like. I like the four or five-page document we got. I guess it's three pages. Um. So I'm looking forward to the checklist and I think it's gonna be a really good tool for us as a board, for sure.
I will make a note in my response to Marjorie, who I think sent out that document, that they will be. Receiving, um they may be receiving individual comments. From individual members of the planning board and it's up to the Sustainability Committee. To determine which of them goes into their recommended process and their recommended checklist as an independent. Committees focusing on that specialty. Does that make sense to everyone? Yes.
I think it would be a great tool for Peter. Planning board team to have that when new projects come for initial informal discussion. To kind of start to hint that checklist. You will um. And I think the design review board's role as well, because it feels like, for example, the McDonald's. Through that design review board, I don't know if they were aware of that process earlier, having. Gone through so many meetings and bringing that up at this point. So I wonder, I think these would be great tools for Peter's team to have so that. And project comes and people are aware of process that we will be following during the course of the project.
Yeah, it's one of those things that should have been brought up sooner and it just, it just seemed like a simple thing, but that. I mean, it's just a drive-through, right? But technically, it does have to to go to design review. So obviously, we've been looking at. Other.
Yeah, I think these are great reminders, right? When.
Yeah.
Projects come in that we have started to strictly follow some of these, then throwing it at them at kind of.
Yeah.
Middle of a project, definitely. Um so I think these are great tools for Peter, definitely, to make sure that they are aware of it.
Yeah, agree.
Uh I I will just add um that um that I I think, in my opinion, they will be. Um as useful and and as applicable as they are succinct and simple. Uh I think if we keep lists. Short and really to the point and not have a litany of of requests that are just just all over the place. Then they become useful, otherwise it it just uh is kind of a a sticking the whale.
Yep, I agree that it needs to be done carefully. Um any long text often gets filed in the garbage can, so we do have to.
We ought to pick pick the battles.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay. Um, great, so that'll be ongoing. I've almost on Marjorie that that email. Um. The other thing on this list that has to be taken care of is the CPC representative selection because it is due. It it changes on August thirty-first. Since I have seen uh no emails from anyone representing, wanting to take on that role. Um I'm happy to continue in the role. Um I've actually only been doing it less than a year, six months or something, so it really hasn't been a big. Strain so far, so um.
I nominate Chair uh Kendall for the position.
Oh, I'll I'll second Kate.
Oh, how flattering. Okay, roll call vote.
Going, good day.
Anna Tesmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine, aye.
Alright, and Tricia Kendall, aye. And I bet Kevin approves of me as well. Alright, so. I will continue that role. I I do believe actually we have a meeting. Think coming up next week. I'm not sure I can make it, but I'll do my best. Um. Anything else on that list that anyone thinks needs to be?
Is it, is the comprehensive plan on the list? I can't remember.
It's always on the list, but I think there's something you wanted to discuss about it.
Just more of what's the status, Peter, of where we are with it.
So uh that's actually, was actually gonna mention, so thank you, Anna. But as a lead-in, a couple of weeks ago, we set out a doodle poll. Regarding the development of a meeting between the select board and or a joint meeting, the select board and the planning board. Um I think we had two responses. Uh there was one. Um the two dates were, um excuse me, if uh correct me if I'm wrong, it was August thirty-first. And then September fourteenth. I think one or two noted members uh responded to that doodle poll. And stated the thirty-first would work. Uh however, I've received uh notification uh through Mike Herbert that. The thirty-first does not work uh at this point for the select board and they would like to meet, uh believe on the fourteenth. Of September, so um. If every, if everyone can look at their calendars and uh I will send out email out tomorrow and or a Monday. Number one regarding the site visit to ten to fifty or ten to sixty Main Street, but also a uh maybe a calendar invite in or email. Uh concerning the joint meeting with the select board for September fourteenth.
I'm good for the fourteenth.
Yeah, me too.
I'm good as well.
I don't think. I'm out that night.
So we have three so far. Kevin, what does your calendar look like?
I depend on the time for me.
I think it was around.
I think I'm probably out, yeah, um. Yeah, I I have something from six to nine.
Is this something that? Is this a discussion? Is this something we need quorum for?
I think more or less it's a discussion. It's a conversation.
Do we want in, do we want to invite the select board to one of our meetings? Would that, would that work?
I would hesitate to do that, given our. Our agenda. Um. So, uh but is it um?
I can see the select board, if they if they're free another night, uh that could work. And see if they're available to to go either a week after or a week before. Um but I I can manage that with uh Michael Herbert.
Yeah, I mean, I think um I think we're never gonna find a time when the all of select board and all the planning board can be there. So I guess it's up to the individual members to say, I can't make it and I really want to be there, so please, can we see if there's any other times? You know?
Yeah, I think if three of us are there, deep in in Kate, are, do you feel strongly that that's not sufficient, three out of five? That we attend for the discussion?
Strongly to keep the process going. Um so I I would. And just if your future meetings from like September till May, I am not available on Wednesdays.
So why don't we stick to the fourteenth and move it along? It sounds like what we're doing, if I recall, we as a board. Made edits to Michael's plan, the select board then had a chance to edit our edits and now we're gonna. Have a further discussion, right, Peter? So I think the three of us could can't, could handle that, as long as we have our original draft. So that we understand the difference between what we presented to the select board and the changes made. I would just ask if if that can be sent to us before the meeting so that we can be prepared.
And get comments from the members who can't be there if.
Yeah, yeah. Um but I I think three out of out of five members, or excuse me, I know we have an associate member as well, but I think that's sufficient. Um and um we should keep the date of the fourteen.
Okay.
If everybody's good, if the other members are good at that, then obviously we won't be having any formal votes because we won't.
That's what I mean. We're not voting. We're just really gathering their input and seeing if we can. Have some consensus and then we're gonna have to bring it back to the planning board anyway on the twenty-second.
Is three members a quorum? Maybe it is a quorum.
No, three members is a quorum.
Oh, three members is a.
Three, three out of the five elected, so um so I think we're good.
Okay.
Alright, I'll confirm the fourteenth and I will send out the uh the drafts, well, not the drafts, but the letters. From the original to our second letter, uh and then kind of go from there. So, uh okay, I'm all done. Thank you.
Alright, and um I'm I'm not gonna be opening up for any public comment when we're in administrative matters, but if any, if any residents. Want to send. Comments via email, they're they're more than welcome to do. It's just too too late at this point. Um, okay, so that was done and then we still need to, um. Peter, anything on applica, any other applications received? At this time? And I'm I'm just down to administrative matters and.
Uh no, the biggest applications are the ones in front of us right now. So, you know, next meeting, we're gonna deal with uh five oh one Pond Street. And uh Building Americas are back in front of us, um along with McDonald's. Uh and so those are the big elements. Then we'll be visiting these two Starbucks and Main Street projects back in a twenty seconds.
Um and we had made a kind of a a list, a cheat sheet um about uh issues for each project. We had gone through that last meeting that we. Thought would still come, that we still wanted to talk more about. Um I have notes of those, but between you and I, let's formalize that and send it out to the board, that list of issues and the applicant as well.
Yes.
Um just been a little unable to keep up with things here, but I'll put that on my agenda at least for the weekend. Fun, fun. Um and then. I think that.
Along with that, um did I remember correctly that for both of those, we were, we were gonna start actually. Um drafting conditions? We like before, before the meeting so that it's not like kind of. The next time around, just starting that. I I thought that's what we agreed to.
We are, so I'm right, I'm I'm, so for the, I am starting to draft the decision. Yep, and conditions, informally just lay out the decision, so I think everyone can kind of get their eyes on it. I think, you know, one of the other, the biggest things are, um how does the covenant come into play? Are the covenant, other other elements of the covenant that are gonna be within the conditions? Uh what conditions from the two thousand and seven approval? What what are those gonna carry over into the new decision, uh at least for the Building Americas project? Uh I think those are all elements that came out of GCG report. Uh that I need to kind of, you know, to format, you know, and that's what I'm I'm working to do. We're working to format that decision. Um it's a very late, it's a, it's gonna be a lengthy decision. Um but obviously, it's gonna take some time to review and the applicant also wants to, you know, the applicant wants to see it as well, so. Um it's in the process.
Yeah, I think there's also little things that we had mentioned throughout the process that will be a condition. So I think as soon as we get out even a very rough draft conditions, people can start. Adding into things, the things that aren't there, you know.
Yes, because there's things that I forget.
Yeah, as a working document.
It's a working document.
Yeah, as a working document, so. Alright, so I think the last thing on the agenda is just the meeting minutes review from July fourteenth, Peter.
Yeah, these went out today and I'm sorry for the delay.
Oh, did they just go out today? We can wait next, okay.
If everyone, you know, I had to add some edits to them. Um indoor, just had to fill in some, fill in some blanks because of the recording of the last meeting didn't kick in right away, so. Um it really was just about the forty Summer Street. Other than that, everything was uh already drafted by um by staff. So, if everyone had the chance to review it, great. If not, obviously we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, if it just went out today, I had I had looked at it earlier when you sent it to me, so but. It just went out today, let's let's save it for next time.
Okay, and I do have the minutes for the twenty-eighth, and so those will be on the next agenda.
Okay, let's take care of it with the one time. Again, I'll um. I haven't gone through the twenty-eighth yet, but usually what I do, I I sure I've mentioned this before, but Peter sends me the minutes, meeting minutes first. I go through them with kind of a fine-toothed comb, trying to catch anything I can, make it as good as possible from when you guys see it. And um and then hopefully it's less work for you and easier overall to kind of go through these things, so. That's the process. I am not married to being the one to do the primary edit, so if anyone else wants to do it, you're more than welcome to take a turn. So, otherwise, um you'll get them a- as you've been getting them, so. Um, alright then, any other comments from the board?
Because Peter said he had to look at the recording for that. Is there anything special you need to do to make sure we don't lose tonight's recording since Wacko wasn't here?
Just, just make sure it worked, Peter.
I'm just making sure.
Don't just slam the lid, that's all.
That's right, it says recording, so.
It says recording up the left hand corner. No, I, I recorded to the cloud and so we'll be able to pull it down.
Okay.
I've, I've, I've done this a couple of times, so uh, we'll, uh, we'll cross our fingers and knock on some wood, please.
So we be offended that they didn't show? Are we getting boring? Not?
You know what, I, 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 we're definitely not getting.
I'm just kidding.
I don't know how many airs we're getting or any, you know, any clicks we're getting, but uh, but uh, no, I don't know. I, I just I don't know why they did it.
Are, are you suggesting that people don't want to spend uh, their night with us?
I just don't know why, that's all.
Well, I like how you said night. Because it really is truly a night, you know?
Like, why would you, why wouldn't you want to do this? That's, that's all I'm saying.
Awesome. Alright, I am going to make a motion that, um, we, that we is it close end?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you. Adjourn the planning board meeting at eleven oh nine P M. Alright, and a roll call vote?
Deepo and Kaitai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
And Kevin?
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. That's a six zero zero to adjourn. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Bye.